Good afternoon, and welcome to the Board of County Commissioners meeting for Tuesday, November 26, 2019. By way of introduction, I'm John Hutchins, the Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair Gary Edwards. To my right is Commissioner Ty Mensah. To his right is La Bonita Bomar, the Clerk of the Board. To her right on the bench over here in support is County Manager Ramiro Chavez. And to his right, Assistant County Manager Robbie Campbell. So with that done, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance to be led by Vice Chair Gary Edwards.
Please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Now, before we approve the agenda, are there any amendments to the agenda?
Yes. I believe there are some amendments to the agenda.
Do you have some? County Manager does.
Yes, thank you, Commissioners. For your consideration, I'd like to propose a couple of amendments to your agenda today. One, and for the public, we have highlighted some of the changes on the agenda. One is removing the item from our consent agenda, which is the description says federal fiscal year, FFY 2020 amendment with the U.S. Department of Interior for operation and maintenance of river gauges. That item, I propose to be removed from today's agenda. The second amendment that I will propose to the Board is on the second public hearing, and that is related to the revenue and on the property taxes. It has been highlighted. I have added two different motions for you to consider, and that replaces the single action that was originally stated on the agenda. And those are the only two amendments that I would like to propose for your consideration this afternoon.
Okay. So County Manager has proffered some, a couple amendments to the agenda. Is there a motion to approve the amendments?
I would make a motion to approve the amendments as read by the County Manager. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the amendments made by the County Manager. Any further discussion on those amendments?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those amendments are approved. Now I need an approval for the agenda as amended for today.
I would make a motion to approve the agenda of Tuesday, November 26, 2019, as amended.
Okay.
Second.
So it's been moved and seconded to approve today's agenda as amended. Any further discussion on that?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We have an agenda, thank you. And approval for the Board meeting minutes.
And I would make a motion to approve the Board meeting minutes from November 5, 2019, and November 12, 2019. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Board meeting minutes from November 5 and 12, 2019. Any changes or to the amendments or to the, I'm sorry, the minutes?
No, sir.
Nope. Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. It's approved, thank you. Now it takes us to item number one on the agenda, the opportunity for the public to address the Board. And I have a list of folks that have signed up, and if you would still like to sign up, that's fine, there's a list in the back, or you can wait till we get to the end of this list, and I'll call on you, invite you up. But some guidelines for public comments. This is the time for the public to address the Board of County Commissioners. We don't respond or engage question and answer, debate or discussion. We just simply listen. You folks, we take notes, staff takes notes, and we respond as needed down the road. We limit you to three minutes. And La Bonita Bomar, our Clerk of the Board, has the timer up on the wall for three minutes, and it chimes down. At the end, you'll hear a chime, and that means your time is up. You cannot donate your time to another person. We reserve the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. Please, if you haven't already, silence your phones. Yep. No comments that allude or offensive to a reasonable person. No hateful, defamatory, discriminatory speech at all, please. Be respectful. No outbursts of any kind. No comments that are commercial in nature, such as promotion for a not, for a for-profit business. And remarks about pending land use permits or similar matters that could eventually come before the Board on appeal wouldn't be appropriate. And finally, any materials that you provide to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. So with that, I will call you in order that you've signed up. I will call the person that's up, and then I'll call the next one on deck, and we'll proceed from there. When you come up to the podium, please introduce yourself and about where you live in the county, and then your three minutes will start. First up is Jerry Durker, followed by Mr. Yon Tavon.
Do you have any tape?
I do.
Well, right here, Jerry. Here.
Sorry. Thanks, Jerry.
You can tear your map now, you know, Jerry, when that comes on. Be careful.
Yeah, it's okay.
All right.
I think that's good enough.
You've got 20 seconds left.
I'm kidding. I'm kidding. I needed that. Thank you. My name's Jerry Durker.
Can you move the microphone closer, please?
Okay, get the microphone right in front of you, Jerry. Move it up and around to your front, there you go.
There you go.
Okay. My name's Jerry Durker. I live at 2826 Cooper Point Road, just outside the city of Olympia. This is the city stormwater map here. Shows Cooper Point out here. Well, you guys probably didn't know this. I know you probably didn't know this because I've talked to the other portions of the county here. And apparently, the city is planning as, six years ago, they made a sewer plan to sewer everything all the way out to the end of Cooper Point, but didn't tell you guys, didn't give anybody notice, any individual property owners out on the county, on the way the line went, notice or anything else. And we just found out about it here in the last little while, okay? And there's no annexation agreement, even though they have been getting people to get, give them annexation agreements for every time they supply them, the city supplies them water, doing incremental piecemeal annexation of the most expensive property in the area, which would supply a considerable amount of taxes revenue to the county. I don't know that they have told you anything about this, because apparently, nobody else knew about it either in the county, and so I doubt that you guys know either. It's just one of those things that they're doing is taking some of the most expensive property in the county and making it so that you guys aren't going to get the taxes from it, the city is, because they're going to plant annex at all. I know they've been doing this annexation agreement for providing water, which is basically extortion, because they require you to have the annexation agreement to provide them with water, even though there's a pipe right in front of your house. They had to provide my place with water in 1983 because they took too much water out of the Grass Lake well by '83 and were pumping it so much that they had taken and collapsed most of the wells in the area, including a number of them. Old Mr. Elliott, Jim Elliott's place was lost, his wells were lost at least twice, maybe three times because of that. So this is something that you guys need to know, because this is, you've got fiduciary duties to have money for the county to operate county services, and you also have a thing on your new legislative agenda, joint legislative agenda, the 2020 one, that says that you want to make it easier for them, for cities to annex property. And I don't, into the cities, and I think you might want to keep your tax base as much as you possibly can. Thank you very much, have a nice day. Happy Thanksgiving for everybody.
Thank you, Jerry. Mr. Yon Tavon. Captain Mark Sterns, did you want to speak, sir? Okay. Followed by you, Captain.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Will you please turn to the handout and go to page 4, 2A. Now, in the past, I have talked to you about the problems that I and my family has had. I am now moved on. I'm going to tell you some stories about other people. And 2A, that's on page four, is specifically in response to the county, option number two, which is to work with Fish and Wildlife for preparation of an HCP. 2A, page four says, "The U.S. Fish and Wildlife originally told me in August 218 that they were no longer accepting individual HCPs in anticipation of the county-wide HCP approval." In July 219, I checked the status of this again with Tim Romanski, and he admitted that they were still accepting HCPs, but that they were the lowest priority, so that they may never be reviewed. Also, Lindecte Kripner Consulting told me that her individual HCPs, some middles were requiring eight-plus revisions, because the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service required more and more additions at each rejection, as if they were making up the rules as they went along. Also, any habitat taken requiring off-site mitigation property times to the land of the taken habitat. The mitigation property also requires an endowment and maintain the property, which is incredibly expensive for a single-family home. The latest mitigation and consultant fees are over $60,000 for a single-family home. I pay $90,000 for my property, so an additional $60,000 to build the budget does not work for me. Now, some years ago, somebody estimated that if we were to comply with the U.S. Fish and Wildlife regulations, the cost per building permit would be an additional $32,000. Here, they're already there, we're past it, we're double, we're now $60,000. Now, if you go to page five, you will see the story of Amy and Steve. They bought 10 acres from their parents to develop a house on it. They worked for a long time with Fish and Wildlife Service, and they now gave up. They can't do it with these rules. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. We have this, Ramiro, as well? Captain Mark Sterns, followed by Doug Martin.
Good afternoon. My name is Captain Mark Sterns with the Salvation Army. I live right here in Olympia. I am going to be shamelessly giving you a commercial to let you know that this Friday is the opening of the Red Kettle season for the Salvation Army. You will see us all over town, all over the county. And this little red kettle represents probably the largest fundraiser locally that the Salvation Army has. This little red kettle tells us whether we're going to make it or break it for the year. And so therefore, knowing that you have the number-one television show in Thurston County, I wanted to come on TV to say, when you see the little red kettle, be sure to remember what we're doing for your neighbors. Also, while we're here, we are in the midst of a needs assessment. We have not done one in Olympia or in Thurston County for probably 25 years. What we want to do is get ahead of the game. We have been sheltering for the last 30 years, and we want to make sure that we are doing the right thing for the right people. Oh, thank you very much. There we go. But we're doing the most good with your donations and with the funding that we get from the county. And so to move forward in 2020, we want to make sure that we're doing the right thing. Do we need to be continuing the shelters? Or do we need to be looking at drug and alcohol rehabilitation centers here in Thurston County? Do we need to be looking at low-income senior housing in Thurston County? Do we need to be looking at the Red Shield Centers for kids and adults? That is what this is all about. This is a time for you to talk to us and tell us what we need right here in Thurston County. And so you may not see another time to talk to us like this for another 20 to 30 years, so please, take advantage and go online, get on the survey. We need to hear from at least 500 community citizens about what the future is going to look like for the Salvation Army in Thurston County. So please, fill it out and fill it up. Now, I don't know if I'm allowed to do it, but I brought souvenir bells for the three of you. Are you allowed to accept souvenir bells? They are less than $5 apiece.
I would say yes, and I would use mine to go out and volunteer again.
And I don't want to be outdone by councilman from tonight, so.
Okay. I would say the gormless has been laid down.
100? Oh, my God, it is. Well, can we change?
No.
You do a lot of good work, Mark. Thank you very much.
Oh, no, I will, but your time is up. Are you sticking around? I can't even get the wallet out of his pocket.
Can't even get the wallet out of his pocket.
I don't carry money around with me, Captain.
Suddenly, I've got a new best friend over here. Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
Thank you very much, Captain.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Trifecta follow. Oh. No time, this may.
I don't carry money, so I'll get you.
But before you start, sir, if you haven't had the opportunity to do this, volunteering as a bell ringer is really, it's really fun. It's very, very heartwarming, when you see little kids come up and put money in it, too.
The stories are remarkable.
Oh, every one were just great. So thank you very much. So this is Doug Martin, followed by John Pettit.
Good afternoon. I am Doug Martin. I'm a voter here in Thurston County. I live out by Gate, Washington. I'm here, we don't need more taxes. What we do need is a more efficient government. Kudos to Mr. Chavez, by the way, in that respect. Right now, the average American household pays 24% of their income in taxes. In Washington, it is actually higher. The number doesn't, the national number doesn't reflect our sales tax of about 6.5%, which is in a four-way or five-way tie for number four nationally. What this equates to for the average family is, they're not getting paid for their jobs for January, February, March, and in Washington, part of April. Might as well just send their paychecks for those three and a half months to the county or state treasury. On the positive side, I understand the county has embarked on a continuous improvement initiative under LSS. I would like to voice support for that initiative and encourage transparency of it. Focus on waste and inefficiency, not on an increase in taxes. Private businesses have to do that? Please, consider that. As you may not be aware, these initiatives have a very high failure rate if they are not fully and actively supported by top management. That's these three seats right here. Part of this should be metrics to track the effectiveness of the individual projects and ongoing metrics that demonstrate the improved processes are not getting out of balance. These should be, as much as possible, transparent to the citizens. One item you may not be aware of is the initiative at the county appears to be fragmented. Each department being left to handle their own thing. I would suggest you investigate a centralized approach. And there's good reason for this. Experts, there's just good news here. Experts, the Lean Six Sigma has a belt rating, it runs from a white belt to a red belt. A lot of your people, I understand, are getting green belts. Black belts are a higher level, the red belts are the highest level. Your highest-level practitioners will frequently operate on a commission basis for about 10%. You can get the same expertise that launched a sewing machine company to worldwide dominance in the auto industry. They were called Toyota, by the way. So you can get that same expertise on a commission basis for about a 10%. I think, want to thank you for allowing me to speak. Based on the allotted time and my property taxes, I'm seeing I'm paying about $2,300 a minute for the privilege.
Thank you, sir. John Pettit, followed by Terry Ballard. You want to speak, Terry?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Martin's taller than I am, and so here we go. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here to talk to you about certain things, and I'm probably going to be paying about $2,400 a minute for talking to you. So here we go. I've had, obviously, I'm here to talk to some about budget issues. I'm glad you're having a meeting or a public hearing a little later, although I think it's more of a facade than it is a really public hearing, because you've already been given guidance, unless you approve what happens in that public hearing, that you will not meet deadlines in order to raise taxes to the highest level possible. I appreciate Mr. Martin's comment about efficiency, not just raising more taxes. And this is where I've talked to you before about something called the shell game, because we've been distributing funds from this account, using them over there, that account using them over there, and this shell game, unfortunately, I'm now resorting to a different tactic in order to try to encourage fixing the shell game. I've been in touch with the State Auditor's Office, and I was told by this next week I should have a letter which affirms that use of detention sales tax is not to be used for paying guards and correction officers. Currently, you're using about $3 million a year for that purpose. Those funds should be coming out of your general fund. In addition to that, though, as I would expect, that when you get the letter, not only do you have to plan for this next year and refix things, you need to pay back the detention sales tax fund for at least a couple of years. So there's probably $5 to $6 million you need to take out of general fund extra revenues that exist and put them over there. You know, you recently said you want to build a flex unit. The reality is, the taxpayer's been paying all the money for that flex unit through the detention sales tax. It's a facilities for building jail facilities. But when you take money out of it and use it for purposes you're not supposed to, the money's not there. Now, you want to go ahead and build, bond more money, and then, oh, we'll pay for that maybe out of the REIT II fund. The REIT II fund wasn't the fund that was set up for that purpose. The shell game's going to stop. I'm expecting you to take action. And just as a prelim, I would suggest to you this. If you choose to budget using detention sales tax as a means to pay for places it's not supposed to, that would be an inappropriate appropriation. And it's entirely possible you could become personally liable for that, because if it's not properly appropriated, then you can become personally liable. Thank you.
Terry Ballard.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name's Terry Ballard, and I am a 35-year veteran, and I reside in Tango Wild, which is unincorporated Thurston County. I saw on the other meeting that you're going to have that you need more funds for road fund. Well, I always think that money should be exclusive, so therefore, anything that goes into the general fund from unincorporated funds should be exclusive to Thurston County unincorporated and not the rest of the county. I don't like to pay somebody else's bill when they're not included. The ordinance that, that, there was a lapse in the ordinance for the Henderson Shellfish Protection Area, okay? And that ordinance, in that ordinance, in the new ordinance that had a lapse of a couple months, that new ordinance needs to be looked at, because they're not doing what they're supposed to be doing. You're supposed to analyze each one of those areas every year. But due to your 10 September meeting presentation that you had about the septic tanks, okay? This fund, this fee is only exclusive to my area, the Henderson. And the report I saw them giving is that my fee encompasses every single septic system in Thurston County, okay? That is bad business, okay? And so you need to look at the ordinance, make sure they're following through with it. RCW 42.20.040, False Report. Every public official who shall knowingly make any false or misleading statement, that's to include all your departments, in any official report or statement under circumstances not otherwise prohibited by law, shall be guilty of a gross misdemeanor. These people who lie need to come up, and you need to charge them and get rid of them, because you cannot make an informed decision if they're lying to you, okay? And this emergency management for this funding that's coming up, okay? That's what it is, emergency management. You cannot make an informed decision on everything that they're trying to stuff into you, which they should have done months ago. The next. We have a problem in Bud Inlet right now, okay? Bud Inlet is close to shellfish harvesting. Why? Well, my reasoning is because you've got a septic syst, you've got a sewer system called Lot that sits right on Bud Inlet and pushes 9.5 million gallons of affluent that is contaminated into Bud Inlet. Now, algae can only do a part, a septic can only do a part, okay? But when you put it directly into the environment and blame it on septic, that's a travesty. Who are you trying to take care of? Yourself, as far as the profit, or the environment? Thank you.
Hey, that exhausts the list of the folks that have signed up. If you would like, anybody in the audience who'd like to speak that has not had a chance to speak and address the Board, you're very welcome to come up now. Anyone? Anyone? That takes us to item number two on the agenda, County Manager's update.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let me walk you through some of the highlights of the many different departments they have accomplished on the last month. That will be October 2019. The Public Defense, client appointments in October compared to October 2018 were up in all units, with 9% increase in juvenile courts, 18% increase in district court, and 8.5% increase in Superior Court. And again, I'll just give you the highlights. I have submitted this full report to you last week. And Public Works, Public Works is moving forward with the Mullin Road Projects that will be between the city of Lacy and Rod Road. The contract, a bond package, has been sent to the contractor, and the contractor will begin construction starting December 16th. That will be just about three weeks ahead of schedule. This project is going to take almost two years, and the reason it's going to take this long is because we have to maintain one lane of traffic open at all times while construction. On the community planning and economic... On the Community Planning and Economic Development Department, we have received in October 2019 420 applications, and that is higher than the 380 of October 2018. Emergency Services, Emergency Management Staff coordinated the National Weather Service, NWS, Fall/Winter Outlook Meeting in October 21st with all the Thurston County partners, including the first responders. The winter outlook is for a neutral or weak El Nino conditions with anticipated and normal precipitation and above-average temperatures. Pigeon Sound Energy was participant of that as well, and will start coordinating as to how will be the emergency respond activities in case of power outages in the county. Public Health and Social Services Department, the Treatment Sales Tax, the TSD unit, will be coordinating with the Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services, a training that is called How Being Trauma Informed Improves Criminal Justice Responses. The training will be offered twice in November, and I think one already occurred. And participants will include a total of 60 staff from the Office of Public Defense, Pre-Trial Services, the Prosecutor Attorney's Office, the Clerk's Office, Superior Court, District Court, the Sheriff's Office, and provided partners. Two staff members from the Clark County Sheriff's Office will be the ones who will be providing that training. Central Services, they have begun preparations for winter weather in terms of the fleet, where all the staff is preparing for, provide support to all the equipment, to the road crews while we respond to ice and snow conditions. Also, Facilities has already cleaning all the gutters and roof drains on all the county facilities to alleviate the leaves that are piling up during the fall season. Human Resources Department, the Directors of Human Resources, Public Works, and Community Planning and Economic Development met with the Park Mountain representatives to learn more about the Gadget program, that is the Gainful and Dependable Goal-Oriented Employment Training. And this training is Employee Readiness Program that provides young adults experiencing high barriers to employment with 120 to 150 hours of paid internship. And again, some, three departments will be providing some opportunities to participate on this program. Information Technology, IT Department, in the last month, they had been seeing demonstrations for a new website provider, and I believe they're in the process of selecting the number one consultant, and that is going to be, hopefully, be implemented in 2020. Pre-Trial Services, Pre-Trial Services has focused on collaborating, in collaborations in community and community this month. The Pre-Trial Services Director provided a presentation to the local Kiwanis and collaborated with Superior Court, District Court, and the Prosecutor Attorney's Office for presenting the Quarterly Administrative Offices of the Court's New Employee Orientation. Pre-Trial Services hosted True Blood staff and the Olympia Bupe Clinic to present information about their programs and increased referrals to access to services across the department. That's what I call for you.
Very impressive. Thank you. Any questions or comments with the County Manager?
No, sir.
Okay. That takes us to Agenda Item Number Three, Consent Items A through H.
And I would move to approve Consent Items A through H.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve Consent Items A through H. Any discussion on those items, any of those?
No, sir.
Nope.
Went through this morning. I'm good.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. Department Items, Agenda Item Number Four is Public Works and a Contract for Consulting Services with Solid Waste. And we have, I believe, Karen Wees in attendance. Come up, Karen. Thank you.
For Public. Yeah. Yeah.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Karen Wees, I'm the Finance Manager and Interim Solid Waste Manager for the Public Works Department, and we are here today asking for an approval of a professional services contract in the amount of $250,000 for Foster Garvey to provide legal consulting services and further to authorize the prosecuting attorney's office to execute the contract. The purpose of the contract is to provide assistance and legal expertise as the, as the department and the county moves forward with a request for proposal, contract negotiations, and final contract execution for our solid waste facility operations, disposal, and transport services. And this is going to be a very significant and complex process for the county that has some pretty significant financial implications. It's likely to be up to a 20-year contract, and just for comparison, we currently are paying about over $15 million annually for these services. Foster Garvey is regarded as an expert in solid waste contract negotiations and, in fact, provided legal services to the county in our previous contract negotiations for these services. And Foster Garvey will be partnering with our internal counsel, represented by Rick Peters, who's here in the office, in our prosecuting attorney's office, as well as the department management, to ensure a fair and balanced legally defensible process is executed in the county's best interest. So, questions?
Okay, questions?
No, we went over it this morning.
Yeah, after you watched our nine o'clock work session, we covered every one of these items in depth this morning. So thank you.
Okay.
Very much, Karen. Is there a motion?
I would move to approve the professional services contract with Foster Garvey PC to provide consulting legal services in the amount of $250,000 and to authorize the Thurston County Prosecuting Attorney to execute the contract and any amendments not to exceed 10% of the contract amount, or $25,000, for a total maximum amount of $275,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the consulting legal services contract. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
No. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries. 4B. Thank you, Rick. Thank you. 4B, Wasdott Participating Agreement. Teresa.
Good afternoon. My name's Teresa Parsons. I'm with the Engineering Department in, or Engineering in the Public Works Department, and today I'm here to request authorization from the Commission to have the Director of Public Works sign an agreement with the Washington State Department of Transportation, or I say Washdot. And the project in question is the new roundabout that is being designed at US 12 and Sergeant Road, and this, this project is located within Washdot Right-of-Way and will provide improved traffic circulation in the Grand Mound community, ease congestion at US 12 and Elderberry, and improve response time for emergency vehicles. Washdot has agreed to participate, but they're evaluating how much they will be able to participate. So in preparation of that discussion, Public Works is requesting permission for the Director to sign the agreement for whatever they are able to give to us for the project.
Okay. Questions or comments?
So with, given that that's an unknown level of commitment, then how are we going to, what's the flex? Where does, we have other partners, is that correct?
Well, there's an ongoing discussion that Romero's been leading with some of the stakeholders in the community, and it's, it's a Lego process of putting together who can contribute what. There's some discretionary money that the Department of Transportation's Regional Administrator has that he is looking at, and there is other discussion of what other money may be available. And so we're still just building the funds to get enough to build the project. If that is good enough information.
Maybe, maybe I could elaborate on that. Initial statement by DOT was perhaps $200,000 on this project with the potential to have more. So this agreement allows for the more to become a reality. Some of the stakeholders that have been having a conversation includes the Chalice Tribe, in some of the private developers, they have land holdings on the north side of the, of these proposed improvements. So it's a little more complex type of agreement, and this is the first step. And I believe we have commitment from the stakeholders to financially participate on this project. The next step will be by how much, but we're in the process of negotiating that.
What's our target? What do we need to get it done?
So the, the target, I believe we're going to start the, what we call the Right-of-Way Plans early next year with the hope that we'll, probably will begin construction in 2021.
I mean, financial target, like what do we think it's going to cost?
Oh, the total project cost, we have, all-inclusive, is $3.2 million.
Correct.
And also the county and the budget, we have a certain dollar amount. They may be contributing toward this project, and the funding source of that is the real estate excise tax, too. But again, that will fluctuate. As soon as we have a good understanding as to the financial commitments from the different partners, then we'll have a much better picture to present to the board.
Go ahead.
I have a question of the County Manager. Could you name the principals involved in this group?
No, no, sir. At this point, no.
That's not yet been completely figured out.
Well, I have to, I have to respect their, their position because some of the holdings may change hands.
Is there a percentage designated to each one of the involved parties?
No, it's not a percentage, and that's what the negotiations go. Because it will maybe, depending on the value out of the improvements based on their proposed developments, that may be a different type of contribution.
Well, it sounds like, I mean, it sounds like what we're doing here is just simply allowing us to try to lock the state piece in.
The state piece, that's the state piece.
We're going to have another chance to weigh in on the total structure, funding structure of the project.
Because we need to have an agreement with the Chalice Tribe. They will have to come to you before you with the details of financial participation. We also need to have a developer's agreement with the private individuals that are engaged in this process, which also will be included on the details of the financial participation. That aspect is a little more complicated because their financial participation is tied to the traffic impact fees or potential traffic impact fees. And that's why we are negotiating as to how that could happen. But also, that document will have to come before the board, before it's approved. So more to come.
Okay, this is just to start the ball rolling, so to speak.
And for me, this is very exciting because at least we see something formal moving forward on this, what I believe a very important project on the Grand Mound area.
Thank you.
And as you say, it's very complex because where the pebble drops in the water, those people in the immediate area, that circle benefit the greatest versus the people that are rippled out a bit.
Yeah.
And so it's very delicate in coming together with the proper amount of contribution each should make. Okay, is there a motion?
I would move to authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the Washington State Department of Transportation, WSDOT, participating agreement, worked by local agency for the US Highway 12 and Sergeant Road Southwest Roundabout Project, and accept a contribution from WSDOT in an amount to be determined later. Be determined.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the participating agreement with Washington State Department of Transportation for the US Highway 12 and Sergeant Road Roundabout. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
No? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Teresa.
Thank you.
Number five on the agenda is Public Health and Social Services, interlocal agreement with Washington State Department of Children, Youth, and Families.
Hi. Hello, Commissioners. I'm Gretchen Toller, Maternal Child Health Manager with Public Health, and I am here to seek approval of the agreement with Department of Children, Youth, and Families for the period of July 1st of 2019 through July 31st of 2020 for $632,050.41. And this is a renewal of a contract that we've previously had, and it funds Nurse-Family Partnership to provide home visits to 52 families in Thurston County and 35 families in Mason County, at least that number of families.
Okay, any questions or comments for Gretchen?
No, again, we went over this this morning, and thank you for your work on behalf of young people, 30% of our population and 100% of our future.
Thank you for your work, too.
And again, this is for Thurston-Mason, and then we'll be seeing you in the future for Lewis County.
Yes. In the next several weeks, I will be back with an amendment so we can serve 50 more families in Lewis County.
That's beautiful, eh? Okay. Is there a motion?
No chance. You could have come up with a longer motion.
Yeah. You've got three minutes.
I would move to approve the Washington State Department of Children, Youth, and Families interlocal agreement number 201176 for the duration of July 1st, 2019 through July 31st, 2020, for a total maximum consideration of $632,050.41 to provide Nurse-Family Partnership Services to Thurston and Mason Counties and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the amendment and any future amendments that do not revise the approved dollar amount or duration of the contract by more than 10%.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the interlocal agreement with Washington State Department of Children, Youth, and Families. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
No? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you, Commissioners.
5B, Approval of Local Solid Waste Financial Assistance Agreement with DOE Ecology. Chris Hawkins.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Chris Hawkins, Program Manager with Public Health and Social Services in the Child, Family, and Community Wellness Division, and I'm here to ask for your approval of a new contract for this state biennium called the Local Financial Solid Waste, Local Financial, Solid Waste Financial Assistance Grant. You're going to have a long motion here on this one because the project number is long, not to mention this description that I'm butchering right now. We're asking for your approval on this. It would be $188,416 from Department of Ecology towards a total project cost of This allows us to carry out our education and outreach efforts on safer practices and products for child cares and households and also yard and garden care throughout the Thurston County community, which helps to reduce the exposure to toxic chemicals and materials, as well as reducing hazardous waste throughout our community. And so we are asking for your approval on this so that we can carry out that work through till June 30th, 2021.
Okay. Any questions or comments for Chris?
Is the, Chris, is the, are the sideboards on this, like related specifically to toxic chemicals? I mean, how, in terms of what your education outreach is focused toward, is that dictated by the Department of Ecology?
It is not dictated by Department of Ecology. It is looking at what is the, what are the kind of key chemicals of concern in our community, and what can we do to address the, the consumption patterns so that we reduce the use of those chemicals and, and help to reduce the waste that's associated with those chemicals. So, for example, with the child cares, a common disinfectant sanitation chemical that's used is bleach. But we're trying to improve the practices there so that only the right amount of bleach is used, only the right amount of bleach is purchased, or an alternative to bleach is used that would be less toxic to the, the environment of those child cares. So that would result in less exposures to the young children that they're providing care for.
I was just curious about, like, for example, food waste is something that, when you, you know, read climate change literature, they talk- you, you know, read climate change literature, they talk about that being a huge contributor. And I know Thurston County in the past has had programs specifically about that that no longer exist. And I was wondering if this would be the type of funding that could do that or if you're, or if you're limited to these chemical stuff that you've described?
The focus of our team is really on that preventing toxic exposures. That's the environmental health aspect of this, which goes to the county strategic plan that's Initiative Nine, which is about supporting environmental health. And so that's where we're really focused in our efforts. There was an opportunity for other agencies to apply for this funding and and we were the one that was, that stepped up and and went after this particular grant opportunity.
Based on a proposal that you made?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, Gary.
Chris, could you elaborate just a bit for the public about the benefits this might have and how you might educate the public to make better choices maybe about, I don't know, chemicals, herbicides, pesticides, that type of thing, that we do things better for the environment? You did pretty good this morning and kind of put that in a concise format.
Yeah, and part of this project is really to go out to retail stores in the community and provide better information to consumers in those store environments at the point of purchase where somebody's trying to decide among a variety of different pesticide products or home cleaning products so they have better information and can make a more informed choice about which of those products they choose. And we're, of course, trying to promote the model of our integrated pest management of Thurston County in a, in a sort of consumer focus. We call it Grow Smart, Grow Safe. So we're promoting that, that web resource, but also putting out information on common sense gardening practices, which really put that, can you control that pest through some other means besides resorting to the chemicals, which should be kind of a last resort? So it's really about looking at, can you control it manually? Can you control it with some other means besides applying the chemical? And if you are choosing a chemical, you're choosing one that's the the least hazardous chemical. So that's the sort of information that we're providing in that retail environment. And then we back that up also with trainings for store staff on, on information that they can provide, that we can help them provide, as well as some community workshops.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. And again, you've covered it this morning. I'm excited by it. Thank you. Your motion.
Okay, bear with me a minute here. I would move to approve Department of Ecology Solid Waste Management Local Solid Waste Financial Assistance Agreement. And that number is Sam William Mary Lincoln, Sam William Frank Adam, dash 2019, dash Tom Henry Charles Ocean Paul Henry, dash 00035 for a total eligible cost of $240,554.67 for the duration of July 1st, 2019 to June 30th, 2021. And authorize the Public Health and Social Services Department Director to sign the agreement as well as future amendments that do not change the dollar amount or duration of the agreement by more than 10%.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Local Solid Waste Financial Assistance Agreement with DOE. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Can I hear you?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Chris. And you have the next one, too, don't you? 5C, approve of the Tobacco and Vaping Prevention Regional Contract.
Good afternoon. Again, Commissioners.
You still, you still, Chris?
I'm still here and still Program Manager with Health Department. I'm asking for your approval, we're asking for your approval of a set of subcontracts from our Tobacco and Vaping Prevention Project funding that we received from the State Department of Health for this biennium, specifically for the 2019-2020 project year. This allows us to support the same activities that we're engaged in in Thurston County across a seven county region. We are the lead agency for that Cascade Pacific Action Alliance region that includes those other counties listed. This will allow them to carry out youth initiation prevention, a big part of which is promoting the Tobacco and Vaping 21 law that is just passed here in Washington State. So really getting the word out that it is, it will be illegal to sell to anyone under the age of 21 as of January 1st, 2020 here in Washington State, whether that's vaping or tobacco products. This will allow them to also work on preventing secondhand smoke and vape emission exposures in, in the communities. So similar to the Clean Washington State Smoking in Public Places Law, trying to strengthen that in the, in local communities. And then finally, to promote cessation for those folks that are using tobacco and vaping products currently. So those are efforts that we undertake here in Thurston County, and we're trying to support the other counties in doing the same, albeit in a limited amount of $3,500 for the first half of this program year. And then we will add by amendment if the other counties need additional funding, a second half of funding, another $3,500, up to $7,000 per county. We have those contracts in, ready to go for five of the other counties. One of the counties has declined to participate, that being Grace Harbor County.
Any questions or comments for Chris?
No. No, again, we went over this quite extensively this morning. I'm prepared to make a motion.
I just want to make a quick comment. The $7,000 per contract per county is better than nothing. But we're fighting, as I said this morning, a monster because the largest vaping company is owned by the, one of the largest tobacco industries in the country or in the world. And they're, they're investing $1 million a day in advertising, and we're going to put $7,000 per contract per county against what they're doing. But it's better than doing nothing.
As, as you rightly noted this morning, Commissioner, this is swimming upstream like the salmon. And, and some of those salmon do make it back. So hopefully, we will have some similar successes in our efforts.
If you save one or half a dozen kids, it's well, it's a dollar well spent. Thank you, or adults.
Thank you. Guys are short changing the salmon on that one.
Yeah. It's your motion, Chris.
Well, they are swimming upstream against chemicals and such.
True.
Okay. I would move to approve contracts with the counties of Cowlets, Lewis, Mason, Pacific, and Waukeaham to conduct tobacco and vapor production prevention activities in each county for the period from July 1st, 2019 to January 31st, 2020 for a total maximum contract amount of $35,000, or $3,500 per contract and authorize the Director of Public Health and Social Services to sign the contracts as well as future amendments that do not change the approved dollar amount or duration of any contract by more than $3,500 per contract. Total $7,000 per contract or extend beyond 12 months through June 30th, 2020.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to approve the Tobacco Vaping Prevention Regional Contract with the counties. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
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 Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris. That motion carries. Item number six is Information Technology and authorize the IT Director to purchase, as I said this morning, stuff.
That we may not completely understand.
Good afternoon.
Dennis Osorio, Information Technology Director. We're here today to ask for authorization to purchase Cohesity as the new Thurston County Enterprise Backup System at the quoted price of $217,577. The Enterprise Backup System is a critical system and protects all countywide data, including file servers, databases, and electronic documents. IT has established a lifecycle replacement plan for five years for the county enterprise backup system. The current Unitrend backup system was purchased with a five-year support and it was installed in 2014. Unitrend's, the current system, has run out of storage. It has become labor intensive for IT staff, and the system's no longer supported from the vendor. Over the past six months, IT has evaluated four different backup solutions to include system demonstrations and cost proposals. Cohesity was chosen as the best fit for the county due to its functionality, customer presence, focus on data protection, including ransomware detection, cloud integration options, scalability, and overall best price, best pricing. IT has collected reserve funds through internal rates to customers to replace major infrastructures, systems such as the backup system. The quote is attached for a total of $217,577. $577. Any questions?
Questions?
When we say enterprise backup, that word enterprise, does that have, is that a term of art or does it just mean kind of the whole government across the whole?
Yeah, for the most part, it means the entire organization. We do have an enterprise backup solution now, but we are past its capacity. So we did, we have had to figure out other ways to back up certain things. This, our current system will not only consolidate everything into one backup solution, it'll also give us growth through the five years. As we know, data continues, continues to grow, so.
Anything?
No. Again, we went over that this morning quite extensively.
Okay. Your motion, sir.
I would move to authorize the Information Technology Director to purchase Cohesity as Thurston County's Enterprise Backup System at the quoted price of $217,577.
Second.
They moved and seconded to authorize the IT Director to purchase new county backup system. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
No? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Dennis. You're here for the next one. 6B, IT Director purchasing dedicated CenturyLink network circuit for Medic One.
Yes, Commissioner. Dennis Osorio, IT Director. We are here to ask for authorization to enter into a five-year agreement with CenturyLink for a 1 gigabyte fiber-plus circuit at Tilly Road and Pacific Avenue for a total contract amount of $79,200. And that's broken down by $1,320 a month over five years. In 2018, Medic One implemented a new electronic patient care reporting software, EPCR, for the 550 EMTs and 60 paramedics in, in Thurston County EMS system, which required installation of new servers. The primary server for this system was installed in the Medic One building, and the backup server is being installed in the ECC building at the Tilly complex. The request is to establish a new circuit for network connection between the two servers at each location. The circuit is necessary to provide a redundant capability for over 25,000 EPCR's recorded by EMS providers in Thurston County every year. As I stated, this is a five-year contract, which is $1,320 a month. And the funding is part of the approved Medic One budget and has went to the Medic One Board.
All right. Any questions or comments?
This one, I'm relying on your expertise and the EMS council because I couldn't say exactly what's going on. But you've explained it as well, so thank you.
Any to add?
No, sir.
All right, ready.
I would move to authorize the Information Technology Director to enter into a five-year agreement with CenturyLink for 1 gigabyte fiber-plus circuit at Tilly Road and Pacific Avenue for a total contract amount of $79,200 or $1,320 a month for five years.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to authorize the IT Director to purchase dedicated CenturyLink network circuit for Medic One. Any further discussion?
No, sir.
Nope? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
And ladies and gentlemen, if you're here for either one of the public hearings, we have just a few more minutes, and we're going to recess to get right into the public hearings. Item number seven on the agenda is the time for the Commissioners to report back on work sessions and assigned committee meetings since the last meeting. And who would like to start? Would you?
Sure. Busy couple of weeks for me. Attended the South Sound Military and Communities Partnership Legislative Breakfast, as did my colleagues. Attended a Partners in Philanthropy Community Recognition Lunch. Attended a YWCA Youth and Government Breakfast. Met with Representative of Sustainable South Sound about a community garden project happening in Olympia, very near the courthouse complex. Attended the South Puget Sound Salmon Enhancement Group Salmon Celebration at the Kennedy Creek Trail. Attended a groundbreaking ceremony at the Capitol Christian Church over on Martin Way with some other elected officials from Lacey. Attended a meeting with Public Health Staff and the Regional Director of the Health and Human Services Federal Agency, John Graham, about local, our local health priorities. And I thanked the Public Health Staff for backing me up on that meeting. It was productive and they were very helpful to me in that. Attended the Community Advisory Committee of Inner City Transit's, Community Advisory Committee Meeting. Attended a meeting downtown Olympia, reporting on an effort to study integration of our local fire districts. Very interesting presentation, and there seemed to be some enthusiasm amongst Tumwater, Olympia, and the other fire districts to further explore this concept for efficiencies and better public safety in our fire response. Attended a meeting of the Board of the Hands-on Children Museum about their challenges and plans for expansion and need for parking, and they're basically bursting, they've been so wildly successful, they're basically bursting at the seams. So they were trying to pitch some ideas about that. Spent a day interviewing for Inner City Transit, which I serve on the Board. We have three members of the Inner City Transit Authority that are citizens, and we have an open spot. Former Olympia Council Member Karen Messmer, who has served for 11 years on the Inner City Transit Authority, leaving massive shoes to fill. And we interviewed and made a recommendation. Last night, attended extremely interesting event at the Tumwater City Council. It's the Sesquicentennial. That means 150th anniversary of the city of Tumwater. And Congressman Heck, Mayor Ryder of Lacey, presented a proclamation from Lacey to Tumwater. Mayor Komet gave a comprehensive rundown of history of Tumwater and all the different ins and outs of how the current borders and all the different political milestones in Tumwater's history. There was cake, there was elementary school marimba band. It was quite an event at the Tumwater City Council.
You had a lot more fun than I did. Commissioner?
I think others of us were at a conference of the state's 39 counties and learning a lot that those jurisdictions have to deal with, very similar to ours. And we, we wouldn't get out of here for quite a while if I covered all the different topics that we covered. But it was a good conference.
It was a good conference. I attended that WASAC conference in Spokane, it's the Washington Association of Counties. There were over 700, I'm sorry, over 400 county leaders from across the state and over 70 different sessions to attend. And it was by far one of the most enlightening and fascinating conferences I've attended that WASAC has put on. I attended the Board of Directors Meeting and the Legislative Steering Committee Meeting, as well as learned quite a bit more about the legislature. I finished the last of four canvassing board meetings with the state auditor, I'm sorry, the county auditor, Mary Hall. And as of just, oh, maybe three hours ago, we certified this last election with Rick Peters prosecuting attorney, deputy prosecuting attorney. So that's been certified. Attended the Regional Housing Council and an ILA interlocal agreement that's still being worked on. We attended the youth, we being my seatmates, the YMCA Youth and Government Program breakfast just over a week ago. And the YMCA has a program for youth involving youth in government and councils and such. And Stuart Elway was the keynote speaker, talking about democracy and saving our republic and civic classes in schools, or lack of. And it was very moving, and I thought it was very, very well received as well. And then, last evening, we attended Dr. Rachel Wood, our Thurston County Health Officer. She's retiring from Thurston County as a health officer, and we attended that farewell at the Public Health and Social Services Building on Lily Road. She'd been here for six years, and now we're looking to fill that spot as well. So there was no marimba band, but that would have been fine. And that's it. County Manager.
Thank you, Commissioners. Let me walk you through your combined schedule of this upcoming week. It's going to be pretty light. As soon as you recess from the regular board meeting, you will have two public hearings, one related to the 2018 Housing and Urban Development Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. And then you will have a follow-up public hearing related to the revenue sources and associations to the 2019, 2020 county budget. On Wednesday, November 27, you have nothing on your combined schedule. You may have individual appointments on your individual calendars. Those are not part of my report. Those are not part of my report. Thursday, November 28, and Friday, November 29, the county offices will be closed in observance of the Thanksgiving holiday. Sunday, December 1, you have been invited to participate at 4:30 in the afternoon to the 2019 Red Ribbon Gala. And that is going to be held at the Lutheran Church of the Good Shepherd, located 1601 North Street, Southeast Olympia, Washington. And again, that is just an invitation for you to participate. Moving on to Monday, December 2, you have nothing on your combined schedule. Tuesday, December 3, you will meet here again at 9:00 in the morning during your agenda setting. Will you be reviewing the agenda for that day, as well as the next week's agenda, December 10? In the afternoon, you have your regular board county Commissioners' meeting, which starts at 2:00 in the afternoon, followed by two public hearings. One related to the amendments to Title 25, and that is related to the impact fees. And the next public hearing will be revisions to the Thurston County Code related to the public records disclosure. That's all I have for you.
All right. Well, with that, we are not going to adjourn. We're going into recess, and we'll start the public hearing. We have two, and if you haven't signed up, there's a sign-up sheet in the back. Please sign up, and I will call you in order that you've signed up. The first public hearing topic is to receive testimony regarding the fiscal year 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. The purpose of this public hearing is to give the opportunity for the public to provide any comments on the fiscal year 2018 Housing and Urban Development, or HUD, Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report. You'll be given three minutes to testify, address the Board, and I'll be calling out the names for oral testimony. When you hear a name, please come forward to testify, and time may not be donated to another person. And this is a public comment time, so it's an opportunity for the public to address the Board. We're not going to engage in question and answer or discussion. We'll take notes, and staff can report back with any follow-up that needs to be done. You're limited to three minutes each, not donating time to another person. We reserve the right to restrict a person's opportunity to address the meeting for a good cause. Please, if you haven't yet, silence your cellphones. No comments that are lewd or offensive to a reasonable person. We ask you to be respectful, and please, no outbursts of any kind. No comments commercial in nature, and no comments that are inflammatory or hateful or defamatory. Remarks about any pending land use permits wouldn't be appropriate, because it might come to us on appeal. And any material that you provide to the county may be considered public records, subject to public release upon request pursuant to the Public Records Act, Chapter 42.56 of the RCW. So with that, you'll have three minutes, and do we have the sign-up sheet yet?
Yes, we do have, but nobody has signed up on.
Nobody has signed up?
On this particular public here, on the 2019 consolidated program.
Okay, so I'm open to the public hearing. Just staff presentation. Tom Webster, please.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Tom Webster, manager of the Office of Housing and Homeless Prevention for Public Health and Social Services. So the 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report, as you stated, is an annual report that is due to HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development. The reports on the federal funds we received from HUD for projects that were completed during our 2018 program year, and that ran from August 31, 2018 through, sorry, September 1, 2018 through August 31, 2019. And so we report back to HUD on those accomplishments. So just to highlight a few of the things that were accomplished during the past program year, we supported the construction of three Habitat for Humanity houses that were sold to low-income households. We acquired and rehabilitated three existing homes that will be used for affordable rental housing through Homes First and Foundation for the Challenged. We assisted one veteran-owned microenterprise by providing a grant to a veteran-owned business. We, 7,431 persons benefited from public facility projects that we undertook. This included the expansion of Evergreen Treatment Services, the opioid treatment center, the Elm Splash Pad, and support to family education and support services. 3,264 persons benefited from public service activities. This included financial support to Together for their Tomwater Schools projects, the Community Kitchen, the Community Care Center, and Boys and Girls Club in Tomwater. So those are just a few of the highlights that the funds went for. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions of Tom? Any questions?
No, again, we have had work sessions on this.
Okay.
I'm content Tom's got it right.
So with that, thank you, Tom.
Thank you.
Nobody has signed up, but is there anybody that would like to address this issue, address the Board on this issue? Anyone? Okay. Thank you. So we move to close this public hearing?
I would move to close this public hearing.
Second?
It's been moved to close this public hearing. Any discussion before? Nope? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, this public meeting or public hearing is closed. Is there a motion?
Yes, I would move to accept the 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and Evaluation Report and authorize the Public Health and Social Services Department to submit the document to HUD, HUD.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded to accept the fiscal year 2018 Consolidated Annual Performance and forward it to HUD. All in favor, say aye?
Might I comment on one thing, just for the audience and those in attendance, maybe? HUD is Housing and Urban Development, is that right? I don't think that was covered in the.
I said it in the opening statement.
Oh, did you? Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Okay.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, the next public hearing is to hear public testimony regarding the revenue sources to support the preliminary Thurston County 2020 property tax levy revenue and levy increase. The purpose of the public hearing scheduled for Thursday, November 26, at 3:00 PM, Thursday. Tuesday is to be briefed on the revenue source assumptions related to the Thurston County's 2019, 2020 biannual operating and capital budgets. The public hearing is in accordance with RCW 84.55.120, which requires a public hearing on revenue sources that support the budget and consideration of possible increases in property taxes. There is a sign-up sheet in the back, and I'm going to presume somebody has signed up. And again, you'll have three minutes to testify. I'll be calling out the names, not only for the person to speak, but the person that's the next runner-up on deck, so we can keep this going in a fluid manner. You'll hear Labonita Bomar has the timer. It'll start at three minutes, and when it ticks down to zero, you'll hear a ping, and something similar to that, and that's going to be your cue that your time is expired. And you cannot donate your time to another person. So again, this is a public hearing to consider the preliminary revenue assumptions for biannual and capital budgets for 2020. And I'm going to open this public hearing. It's staff presentation from Assistant County Manager and Finance Director, Robin Campbell.
Thank you, Commissioner. Good afternoon. Today, we're going to look at the, it's on.
Got it.
Today, we're going to look at the proposed revenue and property tax levy that supports the county's budget. You should have a few documents in front of you. One is a PowerPoint that we're working from. There should have been copies available for people to pick up. There's a levy worksheet.
Copies will be.
Copies for the Board.
Oh, this.
That's just public comment, is all we have, and the resolutions.
We'll give you a copy, Commissioners. Apologies for that.
Okay.
But I'm going to go ahead and begin through the slides. So, one other thing I have to do is to know how to work the deck. Oh, it's not on. Oh, look at that. Thank you, Romero. All right, so the, there are state laws that govern the county budget process. So, the first requires a public hearing on the budget on the first Monday in October. RCW 3640080 then requires the county legislative authority, which is county commissioners, to determine the budget and set it and adopt it by resolution. 3640090 requires the Board to then set the levies, and that's the point where we're at today. 8455120 requires a public hearing on all revenue sources that support the budget, including consideration of possible increases in property tax levies. And 8452070 requires the county legislative authority to certify the property taxes no later than November 30 of each year, which is why we are asking you to take action either today or tomorrow. So we'll start off by talking about the revenue that supports the budget in whole. This is a worksheet of the budget as adopted in the midterm in October. What you see is the general fund is the largest share of the budget, just under $99 million in revenue in 2019 that supports, a little under $102 million in expenditures. And in 2020, $104.5 million in revenue that supports, $108.8 million in expenditures in the general fund. In all, your budget in total for both operating and capital across the county is $340 million, $341 million rounding up. And in 2020, $358.8 million. And the revenue that's available to support that is what we're talking about this afternoon. So the operating revenue for all funds is $298 million, and this is in the, again, operating funds, not including capital. So 2019, there's $298 million, and in 2020, $317 million roughly. And as you can see, the greatest majority of those are from taxes. About 42% of your revenues across the county are from taxes. Other types of revenue, though, are also important to support the budget, and here are some of the examples of the types of revenue. Taxes, of course, include property tax, sales tax. There are special revenue taxes, such as treatment, sales tax. There are charges for services, such as garbage disposal fees, also known as tipping fees, at the Waste and Recovery Center, or the WARC. There are internal service charges, such as financial services that provides accounting services for the whole county. Those costs are billed out to each fund at a fair and equitable rate, which we've talked about as an internal service. So there are many internal services, and those show up as revenues in internal service funds. There are intergovernmental revenues, mainly from state and federal grants, and also state revenue sharing from sources such as liquor excise tax, the marijuana taxes. Those are amounts that the state collects and then shares with local jurisdictions. Licenses and permits, fines and forfeits, are things like marriage and vehicle licenses. It's your construction permit, it's your ticket that you get for speeding. Those are the kinds of things that are fees, fines, and forfeits. Miscellaneous revenue includes investment interest and then transfers. We're allowed by state law to transfer money between funds if there is a benefit to the fund that's paying to make the transfer. So we do that, and you'll see some of that in the charts.
Can I ask a question, although?
Yes.
So under, I'm looking at the two bullets under charges for services, and if I go back to the pie chart, that's a big chunk, that's 29%. But if I look at the two bullets, one of them is something that comes from the public. They pay for tipping fees. The other one is this internal service rate charge. What's the breakdown between those? Like, how much of that 29% pie slice is coming from internal service rates?
For the overall budget, I would have to take a look and get back to you on that.
Okay.
Just making a note to do that.
Because that's not really, you said it shows up as revenue, but it's not what the general public would think of as revenue, additional revenue.
It's the way that the state auditor requires us to record it. It's a revenue to that internal service fund. And the fund is treated, I'm probably getting too far into the weeds, but the fund is treated as a proprietary fund that is selling its services and charging for them. But you're right, the other types of things are fees that the public would pay. One of the most important things about the charges and fees is the people that use the service are the ones who pay for it. So if you go to the landfill and use it, then you pay a tipping fee. If you never go there, then you never pay in to that particular fee. So we're going to look at some of the biggest funds in the county and talk a little bit about the types of revenue that supports each one. This is the road fund. The major source of the road fund is tax, it's property tax. And we'll talk more in detail about property taxes later on. But that's not the only source of funding for the road fund. The road fund also has intergovernmental revenues, and mainly those are grants for construction purposes. And then they also receive other funds, such as transfers from the, oh, they get transfers from the Water Resource Fund for engineering services that they provide on projects. So the road fund. The solid waste fund you see is mainly charges for goods and services. As I said, it's mainly tipping fees for people who go and use this, but they also have other sources through grants from the state of Washington. The Medic One Fund, the major portion of that is property taxes, and again, we'll talk more about those in a bit. But it's also important to note that approximately 20% comes into this fund as a transfer from a Medic One Reserve Fund, where there has been money set aside over the years, and it's now being used for the daily operations of Medic One. The Conservation Futures Fund is almost 100% funded by property tax. And again, we'll talk more about that soon, but that little sliver that you see there of other funds is from timber sales. Conservation Futures receives a very small share of any. of any of the sale of state or county, or timber sold off state or county-owned land. So, the state of Washington collects that tax and then pays it back to the funds. And this is one of the funds that benefits. The Public Health Fund, a very small portion of the Public Health Fund is from taxes. What you'll see when we look at property taxes is that this tax that goes to the public health is actually a transfer from the general fund. It's property tax collected under what is called the current expense levy. But in bulk, the public health is funded by federal and state grants. So, that is the greatest source. They also have a transfer from the general fund included in the other revenue. The Housing and Community Renewal Fund. This is the fund that's available to you for affordable housing and addressing homeless needs. It is mainly funded by recording fees. That's the dark blue piece that's about 30%. And then, not quite 70%, is federal funding in HUD and home grants. I would mention that the new revenue under House Bill 1406 is not included at this time. You've taken the action, but we've not added that to the budget. The Storm and Surface Water Utility Fund, you'll see, is funded about 85% from assessments and another 12% from what's called other assessments. I'm not sure what other is. But these are mainly utility fees that people pay to support the storm and surface water utilities. In your Environmental Health Fund, these are largely funded, again, by charges for goods and services. These are fees, for the most part. A large part of that is septic fees. Then, under licenses and permits, there are food handler licenses. There are food permits for restaurants. It's that type of thing that supports the activities in this fund. Your Treatment Sales Tax Fund, also known as a fund for male health and chemical dependency treatment. That fund is supported by sales taxes. It's 1/10 of 1% sales tax. That's a penny on every $10 spent. The revenue, it's anticipated this year is over $6 million in sales tax. And that is the only source of funding for this particular fund. Sales tax is also the only source of funding for the Detention Sales Tax Fund. This fund is used for the construction, repair, maintenance, and operation of both adult and juvenile detention facilities. And it is a 1/10 of 1% sales tax. It's not quite the same amount of money. You would have thought that treatment sales tax and detention sales tax revenue would have been exactly the same because they're both 1/10 of 1%. But there are different exemptions under each of these taxes, so they're slightly different amount. The Land Use and Permitting Fund is mainly funded. You'd think that it would be funded 100% by permits, but it is not. There are also fees in this fund. In large part, this supports construction costs and licensing for building and new construction in the county. There is also, in other, a transfer from the general fund to this particular fund. So, let's talk about the general fund because it's the big one. This is the general fund forecast. And to read this chart, the bars are the fund balance. The two dark ones are the current biennium. And then the lines going up, the solid line is revenue. It is green. And then where it becomes dotted is the forecast. The red dashed line is expenditures. And of course, the goal is to have expenditures be less than revenue. But that's not always the case. And for that reason, what you see is that in the future years, we anticipate using fund balance to be able to balance this budget. Because the budget that has been approved, as you saw on the tables earlier, the expenditures are more than the revenue that we anticipate receiving in the coming year.
Can I ask a couple of questions on that? So, first question is, this document is very dynamic as I've been tracking it over the last couple of years. You know, the forecasts, you know, get adjusted.
Yeah.
So, looking at 20, looking at the, from 2017, fund balance went up in '18 and '19 before it's forecasted to fall. That wasn't always true in former iterations of this chart. So, my question is, what accounted for, did the board make spending cuts? Did we have revenue that was greater than forecasted? Why does it go up when previously it was forecasted to go down?
So, the forecast is exactly that. It's forecast. It's our best guess of the future at the point in time when you prepare it. What we've had in the past is we've received more revenue than we thought we would, or offices and departments spent less than they were budgeted to spend. Both those conditions will, you know, improve your ending fund balance. But we've also had it go the other way. There have been times, and if you look at past years, look back to 2013 and 2014 where the ending fund balance was significantly less. That black bar is a $10 million line. And anything less than that, the county's not able to meet cash flow needs. So, in those years, we anticipated more revenue than actually came in the door. And we had to do course correction. At that time, the board did take action and cut budgets to be able to improve the position of the fund balance.
Do you specifically remember 2018? How it pops up from '17 to '18? Do you remember what happened in '18 just generally that made that jump?
Oh, yes. So, in 2018, what you see is a change in accounting method. And we, under the guidance of the state auditor, we went to a full accrual accounting of all of our taxes. So, sales tax and property tax. What that creates is a, the one-time appearance of having more revenue, but really, it's just a journal entry, if you will. That's an accounting term. Where we record revenue that we know will come within the next two months in the period in which it is earned. That's what we had not been doing in the past. And the state auditor said you need to go to the full accounting method. That's the year that it changed, so you see a pop-up. It doesn't mean that we actually brought in more money.
So, and it doesn't mean that the board spent less?
No.
Okay, so, it would be more accurate for the public to sort of understand that from 2016, it's been a kind of a steady downward trajectory in reality.
Yes.
Accounting for that wrinkle you just described.
Yes.
My second question is, the, looking at the 2020, '21, and '22, it looks like, and this is, you're using the same graph, so I'm guessing the magnitudes and numbers are accurate. It looks like the reserve is falling faster than the gap between the red and green, like the revenue to expenditure. Is that, why does it look that way?
There's a compounding factor, if you will, because of the way expenditures carry forward into future years. So, you've spent it down. It's not coming back. And you spend down even more in the future. So, even though the gap is small, there's a compounding effect.
Okay, thank you.
So, I mean, the takeaway from that particular graph is in future years, you'll need to address the fact that we're spending more than we're bringing in. This graph is your general fund expenditures. It shows how it's divided between the functions of government, if you will. About 80%, of the general fund expenditures are on law and justice. That includes Superior Court, District Court, the court clerk, the sheriff, the prosecutor, public defense.
Coroner.
And the coroner. Yes, the coroner is always included in law and justice. I think I remembered all of the major players in law and justice. So, the bulk of the spending goes toward those activities. And there's very little revenue in those areas. There is, of course, Superior Court and District Court have fines, and we collect fines and fees. We have to share those with the state of Washington. And they do not, by any stretch, cover the costs of running the courts. And there really aren't any other revenues created by these particular offices. The Internal Services is a chunk of this. That includes human resources. The legislative branch is, of course, county commissioners. You also have funds where we pay for inner-agency and inner-jurisdictional items out of something called non-departmental. A general government is paid for out of the general fund. That's the auditor, the assessor, and the treasurer. And then there is a very small amount of money for health, human services, and economic vitality that come out of the general fund. In the 2020 midterm budget adjustments, these are the major increases that the board approved. There was sheriff's deputy. One deputy was included for the sheriff. There was a crime analyst approved for the sheriff. Superior Court received one law clerk. That will be a position that helps the courts to operate more efficiently. The auditor's election costs were included. If these funds are not spent, then they will revert to the general fund. And the majority of them are provisoed so that the auditor is not able to use them for other county purposes. In non-departmental, one of your expenditure items is to pay for law enforcement officer and firefighters. That's also called LEF. They're medical payments. These are retirees. They are officers and firefighters who served the county and now in their retirement. We cover their medical costs, and those have grown over time. So, the costs are increasing, and you allowed a budget appropriation to cover that. You've provided an additional half a million dollars for parks. And one of the things that you'll see as we look at the property taxes is that is covered by an increase in the road levy shift. In the planning department, you've extended two positions who are working on items on your docket, such as the comprehensive plan, the development codes, and other items that need to be changed. And then you also included a cost of living adjustment of 2.4% as required in your union contracts. And that cost in the general fund, $1.3 million. Those were the major changes.
And I would just add that we didn't, I understand why it's not here, but it should be important to understand that we had a, over a half a million dollar request from the sheriff's office at the end of '19, and then another almost half a million dollar request for 2020, which we did not approve yet. But it's still a pending request that may get addressed by the board. And there's another thing on our plate.
In the next two weeks, yes. Yes, that's the upcoming revenue.
So, that's about a million dollars of unexpected revenue request on top of what?
Expenditure requests, right.
Expenditure requests on top of what was accounted for.
With no revenue to support it.
Correct.
With a mandate that the sheriff must be funded.
Yes. So, here's, again, a look at the general fund revenue. The general fund is funded mainly from taxes. 65% of the revenue to the general fund is tax. Other items are charges for goods and services, intergovernmental revenue. Again, those are, a small part of that is grants, but mainly, it's profit sharing by the state of Washington, and then everything else. And there are about 350 lines of funding, streams of funding, if you will, that come into the general fund. Most of them, as you can imagine, if there's 350 of them, are extremely small. But every little bit coming in counts. But the majority is in taxes. So, we'll drill down just a bit into the tax portion of those property taxes. There are 43 million anticipated in 2020. The local sales tax is anticipated to be 19.4 million. 1.5 million is diverted from the road fund and may only be used for traffic safety purposes in the unincorporated area. So, that only pays for sheriff deputies on the road, again, in the unincorporated area, that 1.5 million. And that does not begin, again, to cover the sheriff's cost of doing that. We receive criminal justice funding. That is tax collected by the state of Washington and shared with local jurisdictions. And then there are a number of smaller taxes that combined add up to about $608,000. We'll look at the sales tax first, and then we'll go into the property tax. Because sales tax is about 18% of the total revenue in the general fund. It's an important piece. And as you can see on this first graph, the sales tax revenue, this is a monthly receipt of the revenue. It's got a very interesting pattern. Or people like me who are finance geeks, we think this is interesting stuff. If you look back before 2013, you'll see that there was a very, very set pattern. It came in, there was a big month that would come in, and then it'd go down for two months and then up. And it was like a 1, 2, 3, 1, 2, 3. We could trust that pattern to come in. And that was because a lot of the state came in on a quarterly payment. So, every quarter, you saw the revenue go up. But for the most part, it was on a fairly flat trend. Until the recession hit in 2010, it took a dip. And then, starting around 2014, started to grow quite a bit. And Commissioner Edwards, you'll And Commissioner Edwards, you'll notice that there is indeed a spike in August of 2018. In 2018, we recorded revenue of a little over $1.8 million that month. It's probably the largest amount of sales tax revenue received by the county in a single month. But if you look at the pattern, it's also not unusual. And we had accounted for that when we did the forecast. So what you see, if you look at annual sales, again, it continues to go up, and this is nominal. It's not adjusted for inflation. But you see, again, the dip during the recession and then the growth that we've seen. We had forecasted in 2019 for 8.6% growth in sales tax. We are tracking at 8.7%. So we are right on forecast for our sales tax. But one of the more interesting things to look at when you look at sales tax is the year-over-year growth. And that's this last chart on sales tax. The trend has been, in the most recent years, a growth trend. But all indications are that the growth has topped out. And that is not to say that we're going to receive less sales tax than we did last year. It's just going to be at a slower growth rate. And the Economic and Revenue Forecast Council for the state of Washington is predicting that it's going to now start to drop off, and that's exactly what we've seen. There was a, a growth rate of just at 10% last year. This year, again, we're tracking at 8.7%, and we expect that to drop down next year. We've forecast at, I believe, 6% growth in 2020. All of that was factored in when we did the biennial budget. So let's now turn our focus on to property tax. The property tax, of course, for our county is collected by our county treasurer, who collects all of the taxes and then pays it out to all of the various jurisdictions. The county keeps about 17.29 cents on every dollar paid. And that's distributed across six funds. And the ones you see here are the general fund, about nine and a half cents on the dollar. Just under 10% of taxes come to the general fund for the county. Just under five cents comes to the road fund. Two and a half cents goes to Medic One. And a third of a penny goes to conservation futures. So that's the distribution.
60% goes to schools.
Yes. And, and the state. Not just the schools, but state and schools combined.
State, okay, state.
State of Washington keeps some, yes, and it goes to schools. So the levy is complicated. And it's not impossible to understand, it's just complex. So I'm gonna try to walk you through how the levy is calculated. And I've handed out copies of this, this is a levy limitation worksheet. I complete this worksheet every year for each of the four property taxes for Thurston County. And I can tell you what's in each of these boxes, but you'd be terribly bored by the time we were done. So I've tried to condense it down onto this slide to just hit the most important points. So the first thing we do when you're looking at the levy for the coming year is you determine what the limit is, and, and the limit is set by state law. The Board of County Commissioners can increase property tax by up to 1%. That is the limit. So the first thing we do, and that's if you want to follow along, on page one of this levy sheet, that's line A. So we take last year's highest lawful levy, that's the actual levy without a refund included, and we multiply that by 101%. That gives us the new levy. That's what the 1% everybody talks about is. And for Thurston County, what you see on this worksheet is that a 1% levy increase in the general fund will generate just under $400,000. Then you add new construction. So new construction, which is on line B of the worksheet, takes the new construction value, and the assessor's office tells us how much that is. This year, new construction was worth $653 million. And you multiply that by last year's levy rate, which was 1.2164, and you take it out a ton of decimals. But I've rounded here on this worksheet for ease. And so the new construction adds to the levy $795,000 this year. So you can see, new construction in the, in the county is extremely important, not only for the health of the county, but also for the health of the fund. And you can also see that when we had new construction in the 300 million, we were only increasing our, our property tax levy by about $300 million, or $300,000. It was not much, but with the new construction going up, that adds to the levy. Then we get to calculate the growth in value of state-assessed properties. Now, this year went down, and you can see that on line C. Last year's value was 629 million. This year's reported value, 605 million. That's a decrease in value. Fortunately, we don't have to decrease the property tax levy by that amount, but we also don't get to add anything. If that had been an increase in value, then we would have, again, applied last year's levy rate and added that amount to the levy. You add those three items together, and you get this year's highest lawful levy. You can find that on the worksheet on lines D and I. Again, on page one, I is the highest lawful levy for this tax year. Just over $41 million.
So is that calculation the general fund part of the, of the property tax?
This is all general fund. This is only the general.
This is not Medic One, Road, all the other taxes going to other places?
That's correct. I'll do this type of a computation for each of the four types of levies.
Okay, and the four that fall within the county bucket that you've got on your, got it?
That's right. So once we calculate the highest lawful levy, then we add an amount that the treasurer tells us is a refund. And refunds are an amount that taxpayers either paid in or get a reduced levy. And then that amount is added back into the levy rate in the following year. And the refund this year is $86,857. You add that to the highest lawful levy to get the total property tax levy, which is $41,169,923. To that, you add the road levy shift that the board has authorized at $3 million. That is the new total levy. And then, then to get the levy rate, you divide the total levy by the total assessed value of the property of the entire county. And you see that amount here, it's $38 billion. And you get the new levy rate, which is $1 or 1.16189 per thousand of assessed value. And you can see that the rate went down, because last year's assessed, the rate was 1.21. So this year, it's less. And that is a factor of the value of property in Thurston County going up. Total value went up, the rate went down.
And also, you mentioned this morning, we are only, we can only impose or add the 1% if the inflation index is above 1%?
That's absolutely true, and I didn't go into detail on that. But the, it's the IPD, that's the implicit price deflator. It's just another way of calculating interest. It's like the CPI or Consumer Price Index, but it's a different group of goods that the federal government looks at. If the IPD is less than 1%, then your limit is less than 1%, unless you take a specific action. But this year, it is 1 point, I think it's 1.39%. So you can go up to 1% in the levy increase. So if you look at the levy resolution that authorizes the increase, and it's the two-page resolution, and you start to read the, now therefor's, what you see is a statement that the property levy is increased by an amount that is much less than 1%. So how did we get there? Why doesn't this just say, increase the levy by 1%? Well, again, it's a function of how the state of Washington has directed us to calculate the amount that goes on the levy resolution. So you see the, the math, again, I've tried to show, show my work, like, like my grade school teachers taught me to. And what the state requires is that the levy resolution has to state the dollar and percentage, excluding new construction or any increase in the value of state assessed. That's right, that's, that's, some of the stuff on this page gets left out. So what you have to do is you multiply last year's highest levy by 101%. We did that here, you can see the numbers come over, and you can, again, see it on this worksheet, on line A, on page one. Then you delete or minus the actual levy that we collected last year, which can be found on page two, line A of this worksheet, or on the assessor's website. The total levy was $40,114,865. So you take the actual levy away from 101% of the highest lawful levy to get the increase of $173,000. And then you divide that by last year's total levy to get the percent of increase. And those are the numbers that go on the levy resolution. So, you know, when, when someone asks, well, why doesn't it just say 1%? Well, the state tells us to do this calculation. So I'm bound by what the law tells me to do. But we are, this computation does increase at 1%, and we would have that revenue to the general fund at a 1% increase. Here's, over time, you see that property value in Thurston County, and this is dollars in billions, went up from 2001, it was under $20 million. To now, here we are in 2020, it's expected to be almost $40 billion. Again, not adjusted for inflation. And as the value goes up, the rate goes down. So the rate in 2001 was almost at the legal limit for the current expense fund of $1.80 per thousand. It was, I believe, $1.77 in 2001. And as you see in this calculation, now it's going to be $1.16, roughly, a little over $1.16. And that includes the levy shift, where in the past, it did not. We started doing the levy shift in 2018. The current expense, total tax levy, though, continues to go up at roughly 1% per year. So what does that mean to an individual? Well, here's the last four years of the rate at, at average home value, or median value of a home in Thurston County. In 2017, the median value was about $219,000. The tax rate was $1.26. And so the tax that this particular taxpayer would have paid to the general fund would have been roughly $276.80. In 2018, their home value went up to $243,000. The rate went down to $1.25. Their general fund tax still went up, because their total value of their property went up. And it was an increase of a little over $27 for the year. In 2019, again, their value went up, their rate went down, the tax went up by just under $22 for the year. And if you approve the rates as assumed in this budget with a 1% increase, the median home value in Thurston County is at $304,000. The new levy rate, 1.16189. That results in a general fund tax of $353.21, which is an increase of $27.20 for the year, or roughly $2.27 a month. That's for the general fund. We've heard comments that we have one of the highest tax rates in the state. So I did a little research, and the Department of Revenue has a table of all of the tax rates across the state of Washington, in both counties and cities, and all the other tax jurisdictions. And if I look just at the county in 2018, which is the most recent data that the Department of Revenue put out, the rates in counties ranged anywhere from 61 cents per thousand to $2.17 per thousand. And Thurston County ranked 29th in the state with our rate in that year of $1.25 per thousand dollars. And what that means is that if you lived in a home of the same value as your home in Thurston County, in any one of 28 other counties, you would have paid more in property tax for the current expense fund than you would have paid in Thurston County. The same is true of the road fund.
Please, audience, please. Thank you.
The road fund was 29th highest levy in the state. And of the 13 counties that have a conservation futures property tax, Thurston County was eighth. So the, our tax rates are, are fairly low compared to other counties in the state. Now, before you go and spend the whole $44 million in current expense property tax, you also need to know that part of that tax is diverted under state law to services for male health and developmental disability and for veteran services. Of the $44 million, $950,000 will go to public health to support male health and developmental disability services. And 427, almost 428,000 will go to the Veterans Fund to support services to our veterans. Now, state law says that you need to identify revenue to support your budget, which is the purpose of this public hearing. So these are the general fund assumptions in the budget. The total levy increased in the budget, if you look at 2019 compared to 2020, the general fund levy increased by $1,650,000. That includes the 1% levy increase, the new construction, the assessed value, the refunds, all of that rolled together. That's before the transfer to the public health and veterans funds. But when we did the biennial budget, we forecasted the second year, and we knew that there would be increases. So the actual increase in the midterm adjustment was only $323,000. Other revenue in the general fund increased by 2.7 million. Half of that was grants that have to be spent in a very specific way as governed by the grantor. And then the remainder was mainly from an increase in recording fees that the auditor collects. And I think that was about $600,000. And sales tax is, as I said earlier, tracking to the forecast. So we didn't add a increase, we'd already factored in the increase in the sales tax. But expenditures in the general fund in the midterm adjustment increased by $4 million. Now, part of that is the matching expenditure that goes with the grant revenue, but about $2 million of that was increased in new spending in the offices and departments, as I showed you, a COLA, a deputy for the sheriff, a clerk for the court, and your planners. That's the reason that we are starting to spend down more of the fund balance in the general fund. So just to recap, those funds that are supported by property tax revenue, the general fund, 40% of the revenue is property tax, it's a rate of 1.16 after the levy shift. The road fund, 74% of our road fund is funded by property taxes, it's a levy rate of 1.15 after the levy shift. Medic 1, almost 80% of the medic 1 fund is from property tax revenue. It's a 30 cents on thousand, per thousand value is the levy rate. Conservation Futures, 99% from the property tax that supports that fund, it is 4% per, or 4 cents, not 4%, 4 cents per thousand, 0.04 per thousand. And the public health fund, again, there's that transfer that I showed you out of the general fund, it's about 10% supported by property taxes. So the actions that we're asking you to discuss and consider today are to increase the property tax by up to 1% and to certify the taxes to the county auditor assessor. In the two weeks leading up to this public hearing, we received 22 phone calls and emails. 15 of those were simply requests for the resolution. Seven expressed opposition to an increase in the taxes. And three of those commented on the courthouse. Somehow, there seemed to be a confusion on how this is related to the courthouse, and it's not. This property tax increase pays the funding for the day-to-day services that the county provides. To have the courthouse levy that you've been talking about, that will be on the ballot in April. That is under state laws that allow for a levy in excess, it's called an excess levy, in excess of 1%. That is only allowable by a vote of the people. So that will go out to vote. This is strictly your day-to-day services. So with that, I would answer any questions that you may.
I've got a few, and I would imagine my sheetmates may.
I've been asking them all along the way.
If, back on slide 31, if that courthouse tax were to be approved, would that then add 47 cents to this $1.16 that shows on 2020?
Yes.
That would bring us up to around 1.63 something like that.
Yeah, that's exactly how that would work.
In the following year, would that same reduction in rate be taking place?
Probably, it would depend on the assessed value in the county. As long as the assessed value is going up, the levy rate's going to go down. It's just a factor of how it works. So yes, the, the amount would most likely continue to drop.
And when, I, I see the board actions coming up with, well, we've got motions laid out If the property tax went up by 1%, what does that equate to in dollars for next year? $250?
So the, for the general fund, the amount of the 1% increase is just under $400,000 in the general fund?
And out of that comes that portion that we'd set aside, that the board set aside for that election process for the courthouse, is that right?
That is part of your general fund budget, yes.
Okay, go ahead, I might come up with something else here.
When was it approximately, five, 10, 30, 20 years ago, when the state limited property tax to 1%?
I want to say that that was in the late 90s, that that.
So this is nothing new?
Yeah, right before 2000, yeah, it was right in there.
Okay, and so, and the state limited property taxes to no more than 1% per year?
It was through an initiative, yes.
Has the county been pleased? Has the county been increasing this consecutively every year, as most counties I would imagine the state have?
That I'm aware.
And this is not related to the proposed 2020 ballot issue and the new, any new proposed courthouse?
No, it's not.
Thank you. And so when we, commissioners, built the budget for this year, as part of the building block was built in an assumption of the 1% property tax increase, right?
Yes, yes.
And so our projected expenditures are based on that same 1% increase in property tax, the extra $400,000 a year?
The expenditures did assume that that revenue would be available to you, yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's all I have.
Just for clarification, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but the, it was an initiative thrown out by the court, and then the, it's basically state legislature, legislative action.
I believe so.
So it really rests, this whole scheme rests with the state at this point.
Yeah, that, that was the case.
Do you have any other questions about this?
No. Yeah, I got a lot of questions.
All right, then, anything else to add?
No.
So with that, I'll ask people that have signed up on these sheets to come up, and we'll see if there's anybody else who's signed up. I don't think so, but we'll check. And when we exhaust the list of folks here, if you haven't signed up and would like to speak to the, or address the, the board on this issue, you'll be invited up at that point in time. Again, I, we ask that there's no outbursts of any kind, please be respectful. I'll call you up in order of your signing up. And a couple of you haven't checked the box whether you want to testify or not, so I'll ask you when I get to you. But I'll list the first person up to the podium, and then the next person who's in line to speak next to kind of keep this flow going. And so the first, when you come up, please give your name and about where you live in the county. The first up is John Pettit, followed by Russ Mills. And I see, Russ, you signed up twice, and the second time you do want to testify, so, what's that?
You're on one check.
Correct, yeah, correct. Thanks, you'll be next.
Good afternoon, commissioners, my name's John Pettit, I live at Offritra. Wasteful choices and decisions, making expenditures as such, apparently justifies tax increases. One of the things which I took note in this particular resolution you want to pass is, on the general fund itself, it's $173,000 that you have noted for going up. And I guess what, what I want to point out is a couple of things. Sometimes we're making choices, and I don't really get it. I know we're short on money, but we weren't short enough to not spend $400,000 promoting a courthouse this last year. We aren't so short that we can't spend $177,500 out of this budget that you want more money for, for an election because you won it in April instead of on a regular election, which would have ran you maybe $20,000, $25,000. You know, actions speak much louder than words. And when people make certain decisions, I don't really quite understand. I do have a way which you can also save some money. I realize it's really important you want to increase the taxes because, as I've seen, you have intention in order to be able to raise your own wages. Okay? Let me, let me make clear here where the easiest spot that you can save, $175,000, not a problem. Each one of U.S. commissioners are earning $122,956, but you are planning on bumping that figure up to around $126,000 a year. Now, you do know that Lewis County, Grays Harbor County, Mason County, all those commissioners make about $80,000 a year. I guess you're that much better than everyone else. Okay. We have, we have a county manager over here that makes $174,372 a year.
Will you please, audience, please be respectful? Thank you.
We have an assistant county manager that makes somewhere between 120 and 161, I'm thinking about 161. We have a prosecuting attorney that didn't spend the time to be here, but apparently she makes about $150,000 a year. Maybe you could just all take a 20% pay decrease, and then that would cover the 173. I'm going to suggest you amend and take away the increase for the 1% for the general fund, property tax. And I hope you listen to these people out here. They're very upset about just being a sponge to be able to get money from because you choose to spend money any way that you want. Thank you.
So next is Russ Mills, followed by Pam Derrick, I believe, but you didn't check yes or no, if Pam Derrick would like to speak? Would you, okay, thank you, ma'am.
Commissioners, my name's Russ Mills, I live in Rochester, Washington. He covered most of what I wanted to talk about, but I do have, ended up with two questions. Gary, did you say that the increase for the courthouse would be 47 cents?
Again, this is not a question answered.
Well, I know, I know, but I believe that's what he said. What happens to that tax if the courthouse doesn't go through? You can answer that any way you want. And another one is, with the county strapped for so much money, why do you commissioners think you need a raise? And why is there a cost of living increase in that budget when only people that get cost of living increases work for the government? The people out here in the real world don't get one. And you were talking about tax revenues going down. When you people raise our property taxes, it gives us less money to spend, which means your income is going to go down. And that's about all I have to say. But I know you won't answer the questions here, but I want you to think about what everybody out here is thinking about. Why do you people need a raise? And what happens to this tax increase for the courthouse if the courthouse does not get voted in? Do you get to spend it, or do you not collect it? Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. So a couple of these questions could be answered after the public comment period. Pam Derrick, followed by Eric Blue.
Hello, I'm Pam Derrick, I live in Rochester, Washington. And I would like you to consider not opposing the 1% increase on the property taxes. I'm mostly concerned about elderly residents. My in-laws also live in Rochester, and they are in their mid-80s. They have a very limited income. And although it seems like a small amount overall, for the older people that have no way of getting any other income, it's very difficult for them. It's, it's, it's a struggle. So, I mean, yeah, I can kick in and I can pay their taxes for them or help them out, but they're proud people and they don't want that. So just, you know, one thing to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Eric Blue, followed by Robert Haskell.
Hello, my name's Eric Blue, I live in Toninaw, Washington. And first of all, I'm a painting contractor, and I know a lot of general contractors. I'm looking at your building here, and I don't see any reason why it cannot be retrofitted and corrected rather than building a whole brand-new courthouse. Second of all, I have, I have four, four members of my family, I don't make a lot of money, and every, every penny counts in my household. And I'm imagining for a lot of these people as well, every penny counts. You know, I also would like to, like you to tell me why you're allowing people that do not own property to vote on a, on a property tax levy when they don't own property. Why? That's all I got.
Thank you, sir. Robert Haskell, followed by Ashley O'Brien.
My name is Robert Haskell, and I live in Olympia. So I went to the last meeting about the tax increase. It was for the illegal levy that you want to impose for the brand-new courthouse, which you guys have voted on and decided that you're not going to do any maintenance on this building, and so you're just going to let it fall to crap, and then taxpayers get to get chased out of their houses and their small businesses closed because you want to levy our properties. I basically, basically just want to call truth to what I see going on here. The last property tax or levy increase meeting that I went to, I saw citizen after citizen come up here and tell you guys that they're going to be chased out of their house, it's going to create an extreme amount of hardship for them financially and mentally and emotionally, it's going to ruin them. Small businesses asked you, how are they going to pass this new cost that you guys keep imposing and spending and spending and spending? And the only way you see out of it is to raise taxes, right? And so you had all these citizens come up here and tell you they would be ruined if you pushed through this levy and property increase in order to build yourselves a brand-new courthouse. Yet, you, you don't care. You pushed it. You pushed it through anyways. I had a conversation with John Hutchins over the phone and we talked for about 40 minutes and you agreed that this tax, that this tax system is repressive and it attacks the middle class and it's wrong, but you're not going to do anything to help combat it. I asked you who or how can we stick up for the taxpayers? Who's looking out for us? And you didn't say any of you guys, you pointed me towards Glenn Morgan. So then I had a meeting with Ty Mensah and I brought the same concerns and he agreed that this targets the middle class and that some people are probably going to lose their homes and businesses will have to close. And I asked him, how many banks do you want to see own houses here? How many small businesses do you want to see? He says he wants to have a better tax system like that of California. And he agreed that this, this is going to destroy some families. Some people are going to lose their homes. Some people are going to lose their small businesses. Yet you guys voted two to one, right, to pass it through. So I feel sorry for you who wants to know, you know, what are we going to do about the elderly couples if you can't afford these levies and taxes? They don't care. They, they know it. They heard it right from the citizens' mouths. They don't care. I went to them to help me fight the system, but you see, they enrich themselves off the back.
Robert, address the board.
You guys enrich yourselves off the backs of the taxpayers. You guys make way more money than I do. The very first thing you did when you got all this tax money this year was stuff it in your pockets. You gave yourselves a big fat raise and then you heard testimony about how it's going to ruin the lives of the citizens here. And you still went, well, I got my fat pockets and my, you know, medical benefits are paid for for the rest of my life. So you people that make $60,000 a year, you can lose your homes and businesses. You guys simply do not care. So I'm going to make it my mission to expose you, John Hutchins, and expose you, Ty Mensah, as somebody who attacks the middle class of Thurston County in order to enrich yourselves because that's what you guys are doing. So, yeah, thank you.
Ashley O'Brien, followed by Alec Fisher.
Three minutes, ma'am.
Is there a... Is it Ashleen O'Brien? Nope? All right, Alec Fisher then? Alec Fisher? Jeff Merriman?
Shame.
What? Okay, no Jeff Merriman either? Oh, there you are. Followed by then Julia Paris. Paris, Paris. Put it over here. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Go ahead. You've got three minutes.
Well, my testimony has to do with this. I'd like to make sure that they're looking at what I'm talking about. Mainly for Ty, since he's our commissioner for our area.
Thank you.
Okay, so what you have there is down in south Thurston County, where I'm from, Rochester. If you look at the little mark on there, the low income of the Rochester School District, 49.4% of our kids come from a low-income house. Let that sink in. So they're low income, they can't afford it. And here we are having a meeting at 3:00 PM in the afternoon when most likely the parents are working. So, I mean, yeah, I'm lucky enough, I work nights, so I can come in here during the day. But we also got to look at other revenue sources. I want to know how much property have we taken out of the tax data system and given away to the tribal reserves? Because Grand Mountain Three Corners is owned by tribes. They don't pay property taxes and private institutions know this. So they'll go ahead and loan them the money because guess what? If I had a couple million, I'd be partnering with tribes too, make sure I, my profits are tax-free. The other thing that I've noticed is I have a neighbor. This is kind of sad. And I'll, property ID 13628432500, 1979 double-wide mobile home. It's held value from 2010 to 2018 between $32,000 and $45,000. No big deal. 2019 to 2020, $97,900. That's over 100% increase. Our assessor is manipulating the numbers. They're old people. They were responsible, but they don't qualify for the tax exemption through old age because they're responsible. They have a retirement. Their retirement pays them too much per month. So guess what? They're paying higher property taxes. I have my own problems with the assessor. I've had a fence on my property since 1979 when the property was developed. All of a sudden this year, he thinks I owe personal property taxes because I have a home-based business. How is this? It's cemented into the ground. It's been there for 40 years, but they need revenue. So they're, they're manipulating all the numbers. Ty, this really comes down to you. You are our commissioner. We cannot afford a new school. We can't afford all these extra taxes. So I'm asking you to protect us and vote no. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And then Julia Paris.
Julia Paris, I live in Yelm. And it took me one hour to prepare myself to drive from Yelm to here because I'm retired and I depend on people to help me to get here. I have my issues about health, taxes, and more taxes. And when I heard all of this and the expenditure is going up, the income of your, of Thurston County income is going down, you know? So now are we going to keep raising taxes or whatever in order to catch up with your expenditures? Is that ridiculous or what? I mean, I was showering and I was saying, maybe I should run for commissioner. I wonder what it requires to run for commissioner? I thought that commissioners are to protect the people's interest. The benefit of your constituency comes first. And now, thank you for bringing this up to me. Everybody here looks like it's about a million dollars that you're earning in order to sit there, manage the whole, you know, Thurston County. But what I'm seeing is, I'm sorry to say, you're very poor managers. If you're taking, I mean, I am from corporation. My background is corporate America. I moved from California to here so that I can retire in peace. And now I'm confronted with more taxes and more taxes. And there are very poor people who are depending on Medicare and social security to live off of and take care of their needs. And there's not enough money. So maybe you can scale your taxes according to income of people, not to say, oh, you're making too much money because you're making $12,000 a year, you know? Where am I going to get the money to pay your taxes, more taxes? So all I'm saying is, let's be humane and look at the interests of all the older people, retired people who can't even afford to go out to dinner, you know? We, we're, I don't take any food stamps or anything. I live on my own efforts. But for crying out loud, help us. You're my commissioner, you're doing your job. I expected more from you, Hutchins, because I voted for you. I don't know about Mensah, but I think you can help us also. Please take care of your old people.
Thank you. That exhausts the number of people, the list that people signed up on. Is there anybody that would like to address the board that has not signed up yet, that has not spoken yet? Yes, sir. Come on up and please introduce yourself and about where you live at the county. And I admire your mustache.
Thank you. My name is Dan Barth. I'm retired on fixed income and I own 20 acres in southern Thurston County. It's in District 3. I manage those 20 acres as conservation and wildlife habitat. Gary, I am also a combat veteran of the Vietnam War with service connected to disabilities and my son also is an Iraq War vet with service connected disabilities. We may have a tie there. Any increase in property taxes, no matter how small, affects my life. On fixed income, meaning social security as we heard here, I need to choose between food, shelter, and clothing or paying more in property taxes. Just because the county has an RCW and the ability to increase taxes for county purposes doesn't mean you have to. I admit, I listened to a rather boring presentation saying 1% increase, 1% increase, 1% increase. Just because you have it doesn't mean you have to do it. Why not consider lowering property taxes? That's probably not what commissioners do. The two resolutions that I saw earlier, they're crafted to say that you're holding this hearing and considering input and then immediately go on to say, you're approving your resolution. There's no time for reconsideration. Am I missing something here? Where's the consideration for public comment, as we hear today, being addressed? And just because you have the authority to shift funds from one program like the road fund to another program, the county sheriff for traffic safety activities, do you really need to do this? I ask what traffic safety activities will I receive for $1.5 million? The other part, the resolution identifies over $427,000 for veterans in the county current expense and $41,000, um, and 41, of the $41,000. What benefits are the veterans receiving for this almost half a million dollars? And how much is actually going to pay for county staff and employees in benefits? Two county commissioners had careers in law enforcement. One's a lawyer. Your salaries and income increase regularly. Mine does not. Maybe increases in taxes do, do not impact you, but they sure do impact me. Where's the understanding, compassion, the willingness to hear from people impacted by your actions and make some real commitment to helping and serving the people who vote, not simply asking for more money? Are these resolutions just another way for the county government to squeeze more money out of its citizens? I recommend the commission, you table the discussion on the resolutions. Take a real hard look at the perceived and suggested need for more money. Look at alternative funding sources. Don't be afraid to cut programs. Programs have been cut a lot. You can do the same. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board on this topic that has not signed up yet and hasn't spoken? Yes, ma'am.
Vernon Mattson, I live in Rochester. And I just, from...
I didn't hear your name, I'm sorry.
Vernon Mattson.
Thank you.
And I just came, I thought of something that dawned on me while y'all were talking and the lady was going over the charts and such. The people that pay the property taxes are property owners. I would be real curious to know, I'd really like to know what the ratio is, the percentage of Thurston County property owners as opposed to the general population who gets to vote in on any of this stuff, but yet that proportion that does not a property owner does not have to contribute to that expense, those expenses. And I think it, it really should be that the only people that can vote on any kind of property tax levies, anything, anything like that at all, should be strictly, uh, property owners. That should be the only people that are allowed to vote on that sort of thing because they are the ones that are putting all the money out, not Joe Blow that lives in a 10-story apartment building. He's not contributing to it. We are.
Ma'am, Ms. Mattson, where about, whereabouts in the county do you live?
Rochester.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board?
May I ask you a question?
You can testify for three minutes once you introduce yourself.
I'm, I'm sorry, I'm Jennifer Haskell, I live in Olympia.
Thank you.
Um, so you had up there that construction was, the new construction was, I don't know, $600 million? Okay, well, that's being built.
You're supposed to address the board.
Okay, well, okay. Being built. So when those houses or apartments or whatever get occupied and you start charging based off the value of that construction, where's all that money going to go? Are we going to end up here next year and you're going to raise it another 1%? We're just going to hide all that? Because you don't charge property taxes on bare land. Soon as you get value to it, you start charging property taxes. So where's all that new money going? Your retirement? Your healthcare? You guys are supposed to work for us, not for your bank, your books, your checks. I'm so frustrated right now. I can't even stand you people. You can stand up there and your smug little smile. You can't even look at this man. You didn't even look at him. And you're laughing.
I didn't.
You didn't. I watched you. You guys are awful people. Shame on you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the board that hasn't yet? Going, going. Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, I didn't feel like to go against it. You should still look at these people, though. They matter.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
They all matter.
Jennifer, please stop it. Now, please, decorum. Thank you.
My name is Peggy Barth and we have property in Thurston County.
Can you step up close to the microphone, please?
My name is Peggy Barth. We have property in Thurston County. At one time, we thought, oh, we're going to build a house there possibly. I wouldn't. We have watched the going through planning department, going through your assessors, going through the building headaches where you're assessed and taxed on a house that you can't even live in yet because of the pity little rules that people, that the planning department has requiring every little thing for a person who's not building it for somebody else but for themselves. There's a limit to the line between safety and extremism. And it seems like bureaucracy loves to go to extremism. Another piece is, you're raising taxes again just because you can, instead of, hey, look at your expenses. What are you expending? Supposedly, you're not spending anything on maintenance because if there is maintenance, there wouldn't be all these things that I'm hearing that somehow your buildings are rotting. Well, if you maintain things, they do much better and they serve you much longer. It's funny, they can have these wonderful buildings in Cambridge, Oxford, Notre Dame made it till this year. And how old is that building? But you can't maintain a 20-year-old courthouse by putting on a roof when it's leaking? And so why should we trust you with more money? You don't manage it well. You are not good stewards of the public trust. If you were good stewards of the public trust, we wouldn't be in this situation. You would be looking at how things are being spent, by how contracts could be readjusted, by how you can get the most for the dollar without squeezing people. Okay, your assessment per thousand dollars isn't that much, but when you have your assessors go out and all of a sudden a person's property is doubling every other year, well, the taxes are getting huge. My property does not produce income that can pay for the taxes. Yeah, there are your landowners of rentals, of retail shops who may get enough money that they can pass on to the consumer or the renter to pay those taxes, but that doesn't happen to the average homeowner, especially those who are retired, who planned ahead based on the information we had that somehow we had a government we can depend on that was looking at the needs of the people. That is the responsibility of government, but you seem to forget that. You pass it on to people who just look at numbers. Forget that there are souls, that there are human beings connected to those. How much do your policies contribute to your homeless problem here? I imagine quite a bit. Is anybody shoring up renters who fall on hard times and if they could just get through a couple of months, they wouldn't be living on this street? Think about what your policies are doing to others. It is your responsibility.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anybody else that would like to address the board? Anyone? All right. Thank you. Is there a motion to close this public hearing?
I would move to close this public hearing. Second?
It's been moved and seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Public hearing is closed. And now there's a chance for board discussion and question and answer and other information to be given out to the public. So I'm going to turn to our county manager, Romero. Uh, so I'm gonna turn to our county manager, Romero. Are you in a position to explain, number one, the salaries?
Mm-hmm.
And that, uh, you know, I'll just throw it out there, I don't know about my seatmates. I don't have healthcare benefits for the rest of my life, but you wanna re, uh, address the, uh, the salary increase and how that works?
Yeah, uh, the, uh, the county has a citizen, um, uh, salary advisory committee, and...
Many of those citizens are appointed by...
Man, come on, Roberts, please stop it.
Let me answer that question.
See, that's the thing, you guys...
If you listen, if you listen, you'll get information. If you're yapping, he won't get the information out.
I'm trying to provide the factual information, sir. So the, the, the citizens advisory committee, um, there is appointed by the board, so the members, and those members are representatives from many different areas of, of the industry. And, um, they meet on a daily basis, on a yearly basis, and determine the salaries for all the elected officials, including, uh, the, uh, treasurer, the auditor, uh, the, um, prosecuting attorney, as well as the sheriff, and the board of county commissioners. Most of the, a couple of selections within the citizens advisory committee, although they're is appointed by the board, that is done by a lottery by the voters, which is the auditor conducts that. So there's paid, it's picked at random. There is not hand-selected by the commissioners. And there's a reason as to why it is not hand-selected by the commissioners, because any recommendations, the salary commission provides an increases of the salaries of elected officials, um, the board of county commissioner salaries, they don't have an option to say a or nay.
That's community.
And that is the state law. So it's not county law, it's the state law.
Everything is state law.
So, and, uh, and, um, do you mind finish my thought, or are we gonna have on this?
I've got your three minutes, was that...
No, I don't have three minutes.
Oh, you guys get all the time in the world, I'm sorry.
So do you want me to finish the thought, or should I stop right now? So, um, they do have the option to, uh, deny or change or approve the recommendations for all the other elected officials, the salary commissions presents a recommendation to the board. But again, the board of county commissioners, their salaries, they do not have an option. The salary commission states and identifies what their salary is.
Thank you.
Uh, there is a public hearing on December 9th, uh, 6:00 in the afternoon here in the room 152, where you can provide comments about the proposal of, uh, of the salary for elected officials before the salary commission can formalize a proposal to the board of county commissioners. So I'll encourage you to, to go to this public hearing, provide your testimony in front of the salary commission, and, uh, and see where it goes from, from that part.
So the, the decision to decide about their salaries will be there?
Yep.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you.
So, is it a question and answer, just, yeah? Do you have more information to give out regarding this, this public hearing?
I, I don't know what else, uh, any other questions you may want to answer?
I can explain the L F, uh, payments.
Would you please? Yeah, thank you. Thank you.
Um, so the, um, law enforcement officer and firefighter pension fund. Um, the, it's called L F 1. Uh, it, I'm not sure what year it stopped.
Seventy-seven.
In the seventies, but it's any law enforcement or firefighter who worked prior to that year and is now retired. Um, part of the contract that they had was to have their medical expenses paid.
That ended, though, that court was ended in the seventies?
Yes, ended.
The, the, that particular pension turned into what's now L F 2, L F 3, and, and the succeeding pension plans did not include that medical payment. So we have a handful of people now who are still living, they're aging, and their medical costs are increasing a lot, but we're on the hook to pay for those. We have to pay. We have no choice. But they served, and we're fulfilling the contract.
Robyn, there was one other question that came up that I thought you might be able to clarify. There was a question about, uh, if the tax, if the courthouse isn't approved, what happens to the money?
Oh.
And I just, the, the ballot is for the money, and I just wanted you to clarify that.
Forty-seven cent courthouse tax.
Was it in the 1%?
No.
Right. You guys are trying to break the law in May to have them repeal that 1% and raise that 1%.
No. No.
Yes.
No, they're trying to have them, they're trying to get the voters to approve them to tax the homeowners beyond the legal limit.
Right, which is the 1%.
Right. Well, they're out, they've already approved the 1%. Their minority made a...
Right. So you guys are trying to get rid of that 1%?
No.
No.
Thank you.
So, so the 1%, if the board approves a levy increase by tomorrow, which is their deadline, then that increase would remain in place.
Tomorrow, we're gonna have a meeting tomorrow.
The vote on the courthouse tax is in April, and that's not factored into this budget, and this budget would not change. That entire amount would be used to pay for a courthouse. If, if that doesn't pass, there will be no levy, because the vote's all about the levy. If a courthouse is not built, then the board would not have to collect the tax, and the way the resolution is written is they couldn't use it for anything other than to address the space needs of the county or maintenance of these buildings.
Well, if they collected some of the tax, they would still get it expended on maintenance on these buildings.
On these buildings, yes. If, if, but that's only if it passes. If it doesn't pass, then none of that money will come in. That four, the 47 cents is what the ballot is all about.
Thank you. Thanks, Robyn.
Thank you.
Thank you, very nice. Sure. Uh, go ahead.
Yes, sir.
Those testifying brought up a couple of issues that I thought maybe staff could address, and that is, uh, everyone gets to vote, whether they're a renter or not, and that's state law.
Does it stay law, the, any registered voter in Thurston County will be voting in any ballot measure that is put in front of them?
And there was an issue brought up about tribal tax issues.
Yeah. So the, the, I think what you heard is the, um, the property, some property in the Grand Mountain area has become into trust, that is, within the Chehalis Tribe trust line. The county really does not give that property away to the tribe. In the process is such that the, uh, the Chehalis Tribe purchased property from private individuals on a private transaction, and they do have the option to put it into trust through the Department of Interior, through the Indian Bureau Affairs. And as a, as a result, when those properties go into trust, those properties will not be taxed in terms of property taxes. So the county really does not have an option, nor has the ability to say a or nay as to what properties the Chehalis Tribe or any tribe in the county can put any private property into a trust land. And the trust concept is the federal government holds all those properties into trust. So the, the county has not taken any action, nor has the ability to take any action to give those county properties to the tribe. That's a, that's a totally different process the tribe have, uh, tribes have available to them.
Right. Anything else?
No, I, I think those were the issues brought up that I was making notes on.
Anything else to say?
No.
Okay. So we have two motions.
I would move to adopt the resolution authorizing an increase in property tax revenue in both dollars and percentage for the current expense road conservation futures and medic one funds, which includes a 1% increase as authorized by RCW 84.55.010.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, uh, to adopt this resolution as authorized per RCW 84.55.010. Any further discussion?
Well, the only thing I'll discuss about it is, is I'm, I, I am concerned about moving forward, uh, on the whole courthouse thing, but, uh, there's gotta be some way to voice opposition, so that's all I'm gonna, I'm not gonna get into it in depth at this point.
No, then this is not the courthouse issue.
Not the courthouse issue, so...
Any further discussion on this motion?
I, I just, there was a comment that, about, you know, uh, 11th hour type of suggestion, and the 1% increase was built into the biennial budget over, over a public process, um, this, and spending assumptions were done based on that assumption, and that happened last year before I even got on this board, and then it happened, and then we continued to, to debate the budget in August, September, October. All along the way, this, uh, was embedded into it, so there was multiple opportunities for folks to weigh in, because there's a public process, to weigh in and say, hey, I don't, you shouldn't be doing it this way, and we did hear some of that, um, from, um, some of the people in this room and other people. So, um, it was built into those choices, and, um, it, we're, we're, we're left with very few tools to cover, uh, rising expenses, and, um, so I, I, I think that it's...
And, uh, anything more?
No.
And then I would just, I would just add that the public expect and should expect the truth, and I'll speak about me only, speak the truth, uh, or expect the truth from me. And, uh, even if the truth is not what they want to hear, I will speak the truth. And this is something that we, I believe that needs to be done, and it's been done over the eons, it's something that's built into the budget, and the whole, this is the building block that the entire county budget is built on, and it would collapse if this didn't happen. So I, I'm not prepared to do anything other than that. So with that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
What, aye?
No, I, I, I'm looking at the board actions and consider increasing the property tax up to 1%, and I'm gonna vote against that segment.
I understand that.
Well, we're taking two actions here today.
Right. And we have a motion on the floor right now.
Yeah, and, uh...
That's the one we're discussing, we're voting on.
I'm, I am not gonna vote in favor of the 1%, but it's included in everything else. That's what the problem is.
It's including all the stuff that you helped build.
Yeah, that's true, but we're now at a breaking point.
Thank you.
Okay.
I, I, I really wish that I would have heard those concerns when you were authorizing another 600,000 or 700,000 dollars of new positions in this county.
Yep.
I didn't hear your concern about that. I didn't hear you saying that, uh, you know, this is, you're playing to a crowd, uh, that's sitting out here.
Not at all.
You are not...
Please, please. This is about the board discussion, not the audience participation. Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
Go ahead, sir. We had a very robust discussion about adding five, it's, it's in one of the slides that was presented today, and I voted against every single one of the discretionary, the sheriff's office patrol deputy, $200,000, sheriff's office crime analyst, $100,000, superior court law clerk, $102,000, two CPED planning extension positions, $205,000. I voted against all of those positions because we have to make a budget. We have, as you can see on this graph, we have been spending since 2016, continuing to drain our budget reserve. And you, and this decision that you're making would only further put us close to the solvency line that Ms. Campbell has laid out for us. And at no point during our discussions about those new positions was I, did I ever hear that you might pull the support for the 1% property tax increase that was built into the biennial budget by you, Commissioner Blake and Commissioner Hutchings before I got here? That should have come up a long time ago, not today. So to hear you take that position in light of this testimony is very concerning about financial responsibility for this county.
And at the risk of piling on, I would just say, I would just suggest, and I don't want to paint you with a false motive with your seatmate, I respect you and have her decade, is that you're making a political decision rather than the responsible right decision that you've been based the budget on.
I, I'm, I'm going to recognize Commissioner Minzer's comments that, yes, I was involved in putting a biennial budget together. You are exactly right. But I'm in the minority, I guess, in, every year, I have went in front of the salary commission and told those folks that I did not feel any incumbent elected official should ever get a raise.
Now you're playing to the political pieces, it's not about motion.
No, I've done it every year.
I know you have.
It's part, that's part of it. It's part and parcel of it. It bothers me that we're spending all this money to go forward on this courthouse. You guys have heard me say this regularly, and that's where I'm at on this. Finally, we're coming to a point where I've gotta take a stand that I am opposed to that expenditure, whether it's our salaries or, and the other elected officials, or, uh, the expenditure to move forward on the courthouse. You've heard me say that every time, and this is the only way I can express that. It's the only thing I can vote on, on this one particular split vote. It's the only, that's the only thing I've got that I can fall back on.
So the last couple of years, you vote a certain way, but now on November 26, when there's no other time for discussion, you're gonna flip?
Well, yes, I'm very concerned that we're moving ahead, and, and I'll get right back, I'll go back to Summit Lake. I have, I'm in touch with these folks, and I've been listening to them. You've heard me all along, saying, "This is gonna fail 70/30 on the courthouse." And I believe that 100%. I have to let the public know that I'm on their side on these issues.
But you haven't let the public know you're on their side when it came to all the expenditures, but now when it comes to funding them, oh, I don't wanna look bad, so I'm not gonna do it.
No, 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 has nothing to do with that. It goes back to the original moving ahead on this courthouse, which I think is a big mistake.
But this is not about, I don't get that much.
I've told you all along, I'm trying to be somewhat civil about not, not bucking everything you're saying, you folks are saying, but I'm at a, uh, I'm up against the wall now.
I would love to be able to, to create a whole bunch of new staff positions and then turn around and not tax the people to pay for them. I'd love to be able to do that, but I can't do that. I owe an obligation to these people to be financially responsible. I don't pay for things I don't have. We are spending through, we're, John Pettit's right when he says we've gotta stop raiding the road fund.
Yeah.
We have to stop draining our budget reserve, and funding six new discretionary positions and then pulling the 1% property is not the way to reserve, to, to reverse the trend of this graph. And I am pledged to reversing the trend in this graph that we're going into, you know, continuing to spend in deficit and continuing to drain our budget reserve. And this is the exact opposite direction that you're leaning this on by authorizing all those new positions and then saying that you're gonna take away the only lever we have to help pay for them.
I don't know of any other way that I can make a statement of how opposed I am to what we're doing, whether it's the salary commission or whether it's the courthouse.
Or, yeah, okay, never mind. Thank you. Uh, so it's been moved and seconded, been voted on, two to one, motion passes.
All right, dear, can you call the vote, please?
Yes.
You, you engage on the, on the discussion.
So all in favor of the first vote to adopt, uh, authorizing an increase in property tax revenue in both dollars and percentage for the current expense road conservation futures and medic one funds, and make fun, medic one funds, which includes a 1% increase as authorized by RCW 84.55.010. All in favor, say aye.
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 Nay.
And opposed, nay.
Nay.
That motion carries. There's the second motion.
I would move to adopt the resolution certifying to the assessor the total amount of property taxes to be leveled, levied, authorizing a diversion from the road fund to current expense fund of 1,500,000, and offer, authorizing a road levy shift from the road fund to the current expense fund in the amount of 300,000.
Three million.
Three million.
Or three, or 3 million, and, and that portion of it is where I plan on doing the funding out of, so...
Reluctantly second.
Okay, so it's been moved and seconded to adopt the resolution. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries unanimously. And now, we're going back to, we haven't adjourned the other meeting, the BOCC meeting, and, uh, any, things go to the order regarding the BOCC meeting even?
No, I think we've aired it.
No, I think we've aired it.
Anything? Come in here. All right, meeting is adjourned.